Make sure everything's working.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, great. We are broadcasting live, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for joining early. It helps me.
Were you talking to me, Jen?
I was. You're the only one on.
What did you say?
Thank you for joining early. It helps me know that I have everything running.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Confirmation.
I have to make up for joining late this morning.
Oh, no. No, I just like to have at least one person join on. There we go.
Yeah, good. There's Harris.
Yeah.
Something's not quite right. Hang on, I gotta fix my situation here.
Harris, just letting you know, we are broadcasting, but we're not necessarily recording yet.
Look in my other monitor. That's my problem.
I think I'm the only person watching it on YouTube so far.
Okay. I think I have what I need. I've got to read the I've got to read something first, huh? Where is that statement?
Is available on
I got, I found it. How are you doing, Jen?
Yeah.
I'm okay. House in Salt Lake doesn't have any power.
I know. That sounds like it. I saw some videos last night on social media. It just looked, I mean, it was wild in Alta, but I don't think it was anything compared to what it was down there.
You know, our fence got, a bunch of our fencing got destroyed and now I'm gonna be out some hundreds of dollars worth of refrigerated food.
Oh, yeah. No, Piper, if you, I mentioned offered you earlier that you can use the space that I have in my fridge and freezer if you want it.
Hi, Cliff.
Hi. Good afternoon. Piper, are things okay? Did you guys lose power?
Piper, you're muted.
Yeah, where our house downtown lost power. We're staying up at Iron Blossom this week in a time share, so it's not too bad. Most of our perishable food is in the fridge up here.
Cool. Yeah. That's a nice solution. Look at all these people early to the meeting. I suppose you, you people also would turn in your homework early?
What? Oh, for Harris?
Wait, what are you saying?
I'm just commenting on all the people who are early to the meeting. Are these, are these the people who would turn in their homework early and?
Never one of those. I was always
That's why they call them due dates.
Right?
When you're gonna do them.
I do like it when people get on early. I was telling Piper that earlier. It helps me confirm that everything is working.
Well, well, the worst, the worst thing is when people join like right at, you know, three o'clock or whatever, and then they fumble with the technology. It's like
Yeah, no, I actually specifically reached out to Margaret half an hour ago and, oh, there she is. In case she wanted to join early, because I know she might have some challenges today. Hey, Margaret, you're muted.
Hi, Margaret.
Hi, Claire. Hi, Jen.
Do you guys have power up there?
We do, and I think it's because of the outages everywhere else. The crews that were scheduled to come here had more pressing needs, and so they went elsewhere. Are you guys all okay?
It might be kind of busy, yeah.
Yeah, so apparently this was just scheduled maintenance rather than an emergency, so we, we lucked out.
I can't wait to go for a run. First time in months I've felt like going for a run.
Oh, because the air is better, you mean?
And not 90 degrees, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not moon dust and 90 degrees.
Right.
Hi, Elise.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Sheri.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, it is 3 o'clock. So why don't we get going? Are you ready, Jen?
Um, yes, give me one second. There you go.
Okay, all right. I'd like to call to order the virtual work session of the town council today. September 9th, 2020. This is an electronic meeting, which is going to be held without an anchor location. And the agenda is to discuss zoning ordinance changes. I need to read the determination regarding conducting the town of Alta public meetings without an anchor location, and this is going to pertain to today's work session as well as the subsequent, the immediately subsequent town council meeting. So as mayor of the town of Alta, I have determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location pursuant to Utah Code Section 52-4-2074 and Resolution Town of Alta Resolution 2020 R12. The facts upon which this determination is based include the percent and number of positive COVID-19 cases in Utah, having been significantly higher since May 27th, 2020. The seven day average of cases has been over 300 since June 5th, 2020. COVID-19 patients in Utah hospitals have increased during the same time period. Almost half the state cases are in Salt Lake County as of September 3rd, 2020. There have been 414 deaths in Utah due to COVID-19. This meeting will not have a physical anchor location. All attendees will connect remotely. Attendees may join the webinar by registering for the meeting through the town website, www.townofalta.com, or the meeting can be watched on YouTube. Additionally, comments can be mailed to the town clerk, P. Lever at townofalta.com. This determination will expire in 30 days. That is on October 3rd, 2020. Okay, I think that's all I needed to do. In regard to that. Okay, so our agenda for the work session has on it a discussion of zoning ordinance changes. John Goldner, as in the past, I'll ask you to review for the town council and anybody watching where we stand in this task.
Okay, hello, everybody. This is still weird, even though we've been doing it for a while, but hi. Starting, I got a message from Piper. Don't forget to press the record button twice. I think we're recording. We are recording. Okay, we have one issue left that we did not complete. That doesn't mean we're finished when we complete this issue, but this is the last one that we have to deal with before we go back and pick up anything that you wanted to revisit or that you think we well, that you think we need to revisit or that you'd like to talk about again. And this one issue occurs in two places in the ordinance, and it starts with the Albion Basin, Upper Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone, and what you would like to exempt from the 50 and 100 foot setback for the ski area commercial facility structures that are non-occupied, non-building structures. We have a big list, not a big list, but we have a list of things that we talked about. I say this has occurred is in two places. In the zoning ordinance, the first one is right after the definitions on page 10, 10-1-7, but the meat of it in the beginning, I mean, the Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone references the FR zone, which is what everything in the basin is. That's on page 17, 10-6A, number G3. And what we talked about, I'll just read it so we can get started with the discussion, but it talks about exemptions. However, structures which are not buildings and are for commercial recreation ski area operation or campground operations such as lift towers, signs, avalanche control devices, snowmaking equipment, picnic tables and fire pits do not require a building permit so long as and only if such structures comply with requirements of the regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, including US Forest Service, US Army Corps of Engineers, Salt Lake Valley Health Department, and the Salt Lake City Division of Public Utilities. So that's in the building permit section, and these are the things that would be exempt from the setback in the actual zone that the Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone is in. So when I see Mike just joined us, so we left off last time on how to really address these issues. Are they enough? Are they too much? Does the building official need to be involved? I don't think so. If they're non-structural, if they're structural, non-building non-structural, if they're structural, non-building, things like a, uh, gate or a sign, um, and we hit them up in the building permit section that I just read as well, uh, I think we're good. However, I know there are other, uh, opinions out there, so I'll leave it at that and we can start talking about it. What do we need to add? What do we need to subtract? Um, how do you feel about the proposed exemptions?
I thought that that addressed it. Thanks.
And actually Cliff, thank you very much, because we were just dealing with that in the actual zone, and we didn't really know how to, how to make it complete until you suggested adding it to the building permit required section that I just read. So that was a good catch. Saved us a lot of extra gray hair.
I guess, um, I, um, in following up on that, um, was unclear about some of the ideas about exemptions, particularly in the, the stream regulations, um, G, uh, subpart three. And the concern I had was that the regulations of the Valley Health Department and the public utilities are regulations that are currently in place and have been in place for some period of time. I, I would have to look to see when they were enacted. But in talking with officials at those different departments and divisions, they, uh, indicated to me that there are things that are currently existing, that they would not permit today. They would not allow to exist, um, because the science has changed since the time that those things went into place. For example, picnic tables, I believe, uh, Patrick Nelson referred to City Creek, that there are picnic tables right next to the stream, that they would no way allow or permit that to be there, but that because they're there, they're allowed to continue. And so, um, the science changes very quickly as we go, just from this pandemic alone, what we knew in January is very different than what we know now in September, and it will likely be different again in another month. So my sense is that we, because the town is reviewing our zoning ordinances now, that we need to look forward. We need to look at what the current science is and make our regulations and provisions, um, adapt for what we know now and not rely on what the existence was in the past, because I think particularly in Albion Basin and throughout Alta itself, that our community can be no healthier than the ecosystem in which we lie. I mean, we are dependent upon not only the snow falling when it should fall in the winter in order to have the recreation that we're looking for, but also we need to have this viable ecosystem for the wetlands, for the habitat, the porcupine I passed today on my way home. All of these things depend upon a healthy ecosystem. And so I think it's more important to grandfather things that were existing and that are currently in place, but not necessarily create exemptions for new, um, new positions, new structures that might violate current science and might, um, therefore be prohibited. So I would propose instead, or, or that we consider, um, in that subsection, part G, replying it broader than just the commercial recreation ski area operation and campground, because we want to recognize that we have, we have residents that are up in Albion Basin and that they are, um, important parts of our community as well. So my thought was that we amend, um, and I can send this language, but obviously I couldn't send it to all of you at once without violating the Open and Public Meetings Act, but, um, I would suggest that subpart three, read notwithstanding one and two above, currently installed with proper prior approval, structures, not buildings, um, are exempt from these setbacks. And then I add proposals for new improvements, structures, appurtenances, require or permit prior to disturbance or construction. Submitted design criteria must satisfy the building official based on currently accepted science. And then I list five different, um, provisions. So the building official has something in order to evaluate the efficacy of the application of whether or not it should be approved. And what I list then is that the application demonstrates that no heavy use will occur in the vicinity of the waterway during the construction. And then so be below that, that in addition to just construction, it would be, um, no heavy use would occur in the vicinity of the waterway, waterway, following the installation. So basically during the operation of that, um, structure thereafter. And then a further subpart C, by submitted design and engineering, damage to the watershed, waterway, and jurisdictional wetland during construction and thereafter is de minimis in scope and area, both for the submitted proposal as well as any cumulative impacts from prior approved, uh, actions. That structure placement is supported by then current science and complies with the requirements of all applicable regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, including but not limited to US Forest Service, US Army Corps of Engineers, Salt Lake Valley Health Department, Salt Lake City Division of Public Utilities, the Town of Alta, and then or, so if you, you didn't, you couldn't meet all four of those, then instead the application demonstrated that the improvements, uh, to existing previously approved structures, which will enhance waterway protections overall, due to improvement to existing apparatus structure or improvements consistent with the current, uh, watershed science. And again, we, we had some discussion about that in terms of some of the, the homes, the habitable structures that are up in the basin. If somehow somebody could come forward with, I don't want just a two hundred fifty square foot addition to my home. What I want to do is move the cabin to a new location, a different footprint, but further away from the stream, so on and so forth. These kind of suggestions that I have here would allow for that and would apply in that area and not only to the commercial ski area operation. So it applies to, um, the picnic tables or whatever else. So it's, it's a way of making the regulations more comprehensive and applicable to more, and yet at the same time putting our policy of the viability and survivability of our ecosystem at the forefront.
I, um, I have a question for Polly that follows from that. Um, Margaret, I was a little unclear about exactly what language you were putting in, exactly where, but as, as a proposal, but let me ask this question to Polly. In our, the language that was distributed to us, where we say we, uh, expect people to or require people to meet the requirements of the regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, including, uh, the Forest Service, Army Corps, Health Department, Salt Lake City Division of Public Utilities. I, I am, was under the impression that, um, and somebody who was going to do, uh, something would have to meet those regulatory bodies' requirements at the time they proposed to do the thing they proposed to do, as opposed to the regulatory requirements today, say if we were to pass this today. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah. So my, I mean, in some ways it's redundant. I think it's just a nod to the fact that there are a lot of regulatory, um, agencies over the land up there. Um, and so true enough, even if this language wasn't in there, you couldn't do any of this work without their approval.
Yeah, no, that, that's a slightly different point, but what, what I mean is that the relevant regulations are the ones that will be in place at the time that somebody seeks to make, um,
Correct.
to do whatever they're doing. Okay, so it would see then, without understanding, I mean, I would rely, I would tend to want to rely on those, the experts in those regulatory agencies to know what the current science is and to update their regulations accordingly, as opposed to pointing to science as though that's an institution with a very specific, index, so to speak, like what, what, what would we be meaning is, was a little confusing to me. So, um, anyway, that's, that's my thought about what you said, Margaret.
Margaret, would it be possible for you to share some of your language with the council at this point?
Um, I don't, I don't know. Is that, is that allowed? Can I send that or how does?
It could send. I was gonna ask the same thing. It's always a lot easier to see what's being done visually. You could either, I guess probably send it to Jan or Harris.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll do that. Um, but part of it, Harris, to respond to your question was Patrick Nelson told me that they would not have permitted, um, in Snowbird, the Little Cloud Lift Placement, um, now, and yet I don't think their regulations have changed as much as the science has changed, uh, itself. And so what they would allow is not necessarily in the language itself as much as it's in the interpretation of the language that they then would apply. But I, other than that, I can't respond directly to your point, except that we know that science changes faster than legislation. I mean, look at how long we've been working on this. Plan and Commission had it for, um, time before us, so it's taken multiple years, and yet we have a clear idea that we want to do something to protect, but we haven't gotten to that step of actually doing it. So I'll be quiet and send this thing now.
Well, just to pick up on your point, I'm sorry, go ahead, Elise.
I was just saying that I think that the way that section is written is, I'm fine with that. I think that, do you know that if we're talking about that G, section three, I mean, it's, those, all those agencies have a lot of jurisdiction on that Albion Basin area, and I think, you know, if a picnic table now is getting proposed in one of those things, then it'll tell, they will tell the ski area. I mean, that, this whole section, section three was referring to commercial ski area operations. So I feel like those agencies will all be checked with, in, in addition to, you know, the Forest Service, and it just seems like that sentence is the, kind of in there, the way it is makes sense. Um, I mean, the only thing I would maybe add to that is that there are, there could be future structures that the ski area needs for operations that, um, maybe we haven't listed in there. So that's the only, my only worry with that sentence is that I just want to make sure we not, aren't excluding things we haven't thought of or something down the road that is maybe new or something that has to be put in that is not limiting the ski area on. So that's, that's my only worry with that one sentence, John. So we just, I just want to make sure we're not excluding something that we haven't thought of or, you know, that they may need for safety.
Right. We, we definitely probably are, definitely probably, can you say?
Yeah.
Are because it's gonna happen, but it says such as, I'm hoping that such as well, is a catchall that could relate to any kind of future.
Okay.
Structure that could be used for, uh, snowmaking or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so too. And just to integrate, um, the points that Margaret and, um, Elise made by incorporating, um, the applicable regulations of those other bodies that have, um, jurisdiction, um, we don't, um, make a judgment whether structures or other, um, equipment or, or things on the ground are grandfathered or not. That's up to, um, the, uh, the body having jurisdiction. Um, they might not be, um, you know, quite candidly, um, the jurisdiction of, uh, Town of Alta, um, to regulate in these areas is debatable. Um, I would, um, I would support it personally, but it's debatable. I might be wrong. Um, so I, I think our best path is to, um, incorporate, um, the, the regulations of, um, the bodies having jurisdiction, um, and their interpretations of their regulations as they change and as they interpretations, um, evolve, um, then are incorporated. So, um, I do, um, believe that that fairly, um, addresses, uh, Council Member Burke's, um, point on that.
So, um, I can share this language, um, so that we see what we're talking about.
And while you're putting that up, I maybe I can quickly say, oh, I'm not that quick. You know, in G, there's three different, well, you've got that. Thank you. The first one, stream regulation, number one, that is exactly in tune with what the Health Department and the city have right now. Number two is.
You mean here, right, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
The second one is more strict for the, for, for our proposed Upper Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone. And then we realized if we do that, there's a lot of things that are up there now that run the ski area that aren't cabins or outhouses or whatever, that we want to exempt, so this gear can keep running. So we're going back kind of to number one or what it is, status quo, trying to exempt the things that the forest, the corps, and the Health Department in the city exempt right now.
Okay, so this is, this is the language that we have before us, um, and then this is the language that Margaret is, um, has drafted.
No, the upper portion is the language of what you have before us, and below the green is what I am proposing. So I copied what's existing and below put my comments.
Do the colors mean anything here? I see. And so this is redlined out or struck out. This is, you're showing all the changes you input, proposed to make here? I'm just confused about what this document is meant to be.
So G three is all new. I mean, Mark, this G three.
The G three that I, that I have below the green comment saying M's comment, that G three, I have made changes to the areas that are green by adding it, put it left in red what was there and line through what I was changing from the red existing language.
Okay, so, so this language here.
Is not mine.
Is not yours. And then this language here is meant to amend what I had just highlighted.
Yes, if you look at it, I said to, to leave the same one, two, and four, and then I was changing three right there in M's proposed language in green.
So the red is part of our leftover stuff?
Correct.
This is yours. Okay.
Correct.
So, and when you mean currently installed with proper prior approval, you basically mean non-complying structures?
Right. Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be non-complying. If, if it is a complying structure or conforming use and it was, it was approved, then that's what I'm, that's what I'm speaking to. So I'm trying not to, um, make it a singular exemption for a singular entity, a business entity. So I'm trying to make it, um, more comprehensive than what was originally written.
So. So um in a world in which people uh. Seem to think that vaccines are dangerous and that climate change doesn't actually exist, I'm not sure. Um what currently accepted science um means in this context, who's going to decide that?
Well. There certainly are people that have different opinions about science, but I think it's. Pretty clearly understood about what accepted science is about vaccination and about climate change. I think that that's why I tried to put in language about accepted science. You, you will always have a situation where there are individuals or even small groups. That have different opinions, but um I think. That I tried to put in language that uh allowed for that dissent. And yet provided for the majority view.
So the thing that I noticed the, the most in here is that um. You're requiring new improvement stuck structures are required to have a permit, and the whole point of us. Putting in that section for commercial recreation ski area operation was to make it so that's. A picnic table or a sign or a lift tower or whatever, snowmaking wouldn't need a permit from the town of Alta.
They're both exempt from the fifty or a hundred foot setback and they don't need a permit.
So, but in this language in green, it says require a permit. Under that parentheses three for the, the language Margaret is proposing. And that kind of defeats the whole reason we put in that section three for the ski area.
Just to follow on that comment, um I, I want to make it clear that under um the. The proposed language that's currently in front of us that we're um considering. The town uh does retain um jurisdiction to. Uh determine whether those regulations have been followed, um so even though. There are current proposal doesn't require a prior permit, um if it turns out that. Whatever was done didn't follow the applicable um. Regulations, the town um keeps its jurisdiction uh to come in and address that.
I, I would prefer to come up front rather than afterwards to try to mitigate or um. Correct, um and so that's, I think, why I felt that a permit was something, I mean. We, we know that the skeria is very clear and very. Direct in their processes in. Creating plans, days, months, weeks, years in advance. I mean, look at the master development plan and all these other things, so it's not like they decide today that they want to do something. And so things that require forethought, um I, I guess. I don't know why a permit would be such a huge hurdle. Uh for any of these things that we're talking about here.
So you're saying a speed limit sign on the summer road installed by the area would have to have a permit?
What, does the ski area have authority to put a speed limit sign on that road?
Let's say the campground, if you want to put a speed limit sign on the campground. Are you, that you recommend this language, you're saying that they have to have a permit for that? And that's just, I, I mean, the permitting process takes time, so I mean, that, like I said, the whole intent of us doing these ordinance changes. Was to not impede. What is already going on for the ski area, which, I mean, I gotta, I, I have to, I feel like I have to remind some people sometimes. That the ski area is like one of our biggest environmental advocates, they do so much work in Albion Basin and Alta. And I feel like all the conversations we've just been having, everybody is just kind of, I shouldn't say everybody, but there's just this thing about controlling. And permitting for the ski area, and I just feel like we're gonna take this business that supports the town. And is a major part of income for the town of Alta and employment, and we're just, we're just making it harder for them to do their business. And that is not, I believe, the intent of some of this, this whole discussion that was proposed to us from the planning commission over a year ago. So that, I don't feel comfortable with this language right now, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the language that was presented to us. By John, but this other language, I feel like is just, it's just going back to what we already had.
I appreciate the sentiments, Elise, but. It could certainly be said that we as a council should philosophically look at. Has any business in town always acted in the best interest of the environment of the town of Alta? And I think it's an open question, I think the Supreme Lift Build has left many people feeling very critical of Alta Ski Lifts. And for good reason. Language like this might prevent some things happening that now can't really be remediated. No matter what we, language we use to call what's happening to repair some of the damage that was done. So I think philosophically amongst the council, we should ask ourselves, what would prevent that from ever happening again? The current language as it's written wouldn't, this proposal might.
Can I say something?
I'd prefer if we could talk about this first through the council, sir, and then perhaps afterwards.
I guess maybe one thing that I would say, more for discussion than anything else, this puts a lot of burden on the building official. To make decisions that are. In different realms. That we know, that we normally, that we normally operate on.
Yeah, I, I mean, Mike, I, I think I agree with Elise about the point. That we had already kind of covered this, I thought, um about trying not to burden. Normal operations, um but um. I'm also pretty concerned about some of the, some of the ambiguity I see in here about accepted science and heavy use. That's why I skip back to the definitions, I don't know, I don't know what the building official is going to. Rely on in making a decision about what heavy use means or, or, or. Or the science, so it just feels to me like. You, you know, I, I don't know what happened exactly in the process of building the Supreme Lift. But I, I'm pretty sure that Salt Lake Public Utilities is, was not pleased with some of those actions. And um so it may have been a oversight in their regular. A failure of oversight, but I don't know that we can't rely on their. Thoroughness, I mean, this is a pretty extensive list of expert people about waterways. And in the environment, seems to me.
Well, well, just the other thing that I would point out about this is um. Let's say some future operator um of um the ski area. Were undertaking. Irresponsible actions that in fact did not comply with um Salt Lake watershed, Forest Service. Regulations, other regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, and those bodies. Decided for whatever reasons not to um take action. The language that was already before us coming into this meeting today would in fact. Preserve um the ability of. The um town of Alta to. Challenge um those um actions on the grounds. That um even though the regular body, regulatory bodies didn't take action. In fact, um the, the, the proposed action does not comply um with that regulators. Um laws and, and rules, uh and so I appreciate the points that. Councilmembers Burke and Davis have made, but. You know, I, I think maybe we have an honest disagreement of opinion here, but in fact. The language that was already in front of us does preserve the ability. Of the town of Alta to um take action um against. Those types of things.
Yeah, so, so I think Cliff, you're pointing out um what I've just highlighted here that they're exempt. Only if they comply with the requirements of the regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, and it doesn't say anything about. Notwithstanding the, the actions of the regulatory agency, right, so they would no longer be exempt from our. Provisions if they don't meet the regulatory requirements.
But are, are you not um then potentially in conflict with. Your statement that somehow the whole Supreme Lift uh. Uh alignment and the base was something that Public Utilities was not pleased with, and so. That process that they had or presumably had or somehow was. Maybe violated, I, I don't know, but this is a way to ensure in an area. Where we likely have more eyes on the ground than others, and particularly, you know, depending on the season. We know that the Forest Service is very heavily involved in having to fight fires and more so. Year over year, um and so their ability to approve and do things. Is limited and, and um if the town were to be able to communicate. Uh and, and be informed and be part of the process before rather than after. Uh it seems to me it's an advantage to everyone, uh maybe there's a way of making the process. Not as cumbersome, maybe it's not the typical permit process such that. Elise's concern about a speed limit sign in the campground doesn't rise to the level of. A permit for a, a habitable structure, which clearly we're not talking about habitable structures. But maybe there's a tiered permit process as a way of keeping the process. Streamlined and yet informative, so the town uh knows about things before rather than after.
Um well, with that, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mike Mon to um offer his um thoughts. This time, please.
Thank you, Harris, um a couple things, first I would say there. Seems like there's a lot of misunderstanding what happened in regards to the Supreme Lift and how that was dealt with, and I'd be love to deal with that at a different time. Because there's a lot of misunderstanding what has been done, and I would tell you right now, the Forest Service looks at what it was done. And the efforts taken as an example, they are using it others to promote throughout the nation. Of how we mitigated and took care of the wetlands issue there, so we'll deal with that another time, we'll be glad to give you a report on that. Um the, I do have a question, um my understanding of the MOU. Between the Forest Service and the town of Alta. Is that the Forest Service in that MOU has jurisdiction over land use. And the town of Alta has been given jurisdiction over the building codes used in construction. On national forest land. Um so is this regulation? A land use one or a building code one?
So, and let me, I can um read the MOU, I was reviewing it while we were talking. Cause I know this came up also earlier, so in the MOU from nineteen ninety-four. It says the Forest Service shall have the final authority to determine the types of land uses. Which may be developed on national Forest Service land within the town, so the types of land uses. The town shall have final authority to establish and enforce building code, fire and other. Generally accepted state building construction safety codes with respect to development involving new buildings. And construction or remodeling, so it says that there, that's kind of the, under the. Forest involvement in town planning section.
What does that mean, Polly, can you kind of help me understand it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking also because there was also um. In the whereas is, it was kind of interesting because it talks about. Whereas the town has planning activities mandated by state and local laws. And where it is understood that the forest has responsibility and authority for decisions. On matters within its jurisdiction, and it's understood that the town has responsibility and authority. For decisions on matters within its jurisdiction, eh this MOU really talks about, you know. Trying to allow each jurisdiction to express their authority and try to. Try to have us work together, so even though um. You know. It's not, it doesn't say, okay, the town, you know, well, it does say, obviously for building code type things. You know, it talks about the types of land uses that may be developed, but it doesn't talk about, you know, so the forests, I don't think you. I think the town still does have um. Legal authority within the Forest Service, obviously clearly to enforce. Construction type things, um building fire. And that type of thing, construction and remodeling, and that's more towards um. Building codes, I mean, it's, it's a little, it's not as black and white as I would like it to be, but it is what it is. So.
We, we have always understood that to mean, um when it comes to land, watershed, water. Things that are on within land use, that, that's the pro, that's what the Forest Service gets involved in. They have specifications, they have requirements, we, we go through their process on that. And whenever there has been a building project, Alf's Restaurant. For example, then they rely upon the local eh entities, building codes. That we build to those codes, we meet those requirements for fire, for building and such. And um so I'm just trying to understand is when we talk about this particular regulation, a stream regulation. Is that a building code or a land use code?
If, if the um. If this is adopted as it has been presented to us earlier today, earlier, you know, the, coming into this meeting. You will not for, for structures that aren't buildings, it looks to me like. You will just be dealing with the current regulatory jurisdictions, just like you have been.
Correct, and I think that, that fits what we're trying, the intent of what we were trying to do, I believe.
Yeah, the only, the only time it seems to me that the town would weigh in, this is following from what Cliff said. Is when um it comes to the attention of the town that you have uh not complied with those other. Regulations imposed by those jurisdictions.
And if that happens, you just have to call the Forest Service and then they tell us we're in violation of our permit and we have to fix it or else we don't have a permit.
At that point, uh reasonable people could disagree um about the right way forward. But uh the language that we came in um with um preserves the rights of. with preserves the rights of, of all the parties with respect to those positions. And so let's leave that fight for another day and trust that it may not come, but, but if it does, we're not trying to put a hand on the scale.
I don't think that how it's written now, or I think how it's written now complies with the MOU. And I think the other portion of this that's important is it says in this MOU, it's recognized that a large portion of the land in the Town of Alta is on national forest land. As such, the forests in the town are interdependent. Therefore, both agencies desire that the forest participates to the extent appropriate in town planning and project review processes. So I just really, when I read this MOU, it really just talks about us working together and working hand in hand to make sure that this land is regulated in a manner that meets both the town's needs and the Forest Service's needs.
And I, I agree with that's what's its intent, but you know, in the whereas it makes it clear that the Forest Service preserves its rights to have jurisdiction over land use and grants the town its rights under state law for jurisdiction over building code. Is that correct in those whereas?
I, it says that it's recognized the Forest Service has jurisdictional authority over national forest lands within the town. And it doesn't, and then it says the town by state law has jurisdictional authority over building fire codes, has police and fire authority. And it doesn't specifically say that the, I didn't see, I could have missed it when I was reading it. But I didn't see that it said that it has land use authority over the land. It made it, it says, we have planning activities mandated, they have responsibility and authorities. You know, we each have our own. I think I read the other part that talked about. They have jurisdiction over their land, you know, so. In any case, I, my take is that what is being proposed that was presented to the council in the red line and the clean copy meets the, meets the intent of that MOU and meets the letter of the MOU.
We concur with that.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't expect the Forest Service to divest itself of its authority over forest land to a town directly, right? And at the same time, you wouldn't expect the forest to really develop, duplicate the, the knowledge that's in various municipalities where they may operate about how to, how to comply with, how to put in fire, fire sprinklers or whatever. John, is there some other conversation that we need to engage in at this point? With 10 minutes left in this work session?
This was the last thing that we didn't consent on. And until we, I mean, we, if we get finished with this, the only thing we'd have to engage on or in is anything that anyone else wanted to bring up that they think that maybe we didn't address properly, or we glossed over, or that we just didn't talk about. So.
Okay.
Talked about, I could think there were like 75 plus maybe 13 more sections that we talked about amended and changed, proposed to change. This is the last one. And then so without going back, this would be it.
So is there, is there something?
I do have additional question about the changes, not, not this particular section, but in the section where we talk about, we changed the definition of a non-conforming, a non-compliant structure. And then we have a section that says if you have a non-compliant structure, you can't add more than 250 square feet or change the intensity of use of the building. So this is kind of goes back to the, still the land use or building code scenario is Wildcat Ticket Office, for example, is, under the new definition, is a non-compliant structure. Which would limit us from being able to expand at more than 250 feet in the future if we needed to, or change its intensity of use. That would be the same for the Sugarloaf Pump House. So I'm just, I'm wondering if I'm reading those sections correctly and understand that. That didn't seem like an intent to do that, but I'm just wondering if it's an intent, unintentional some of the changes in the language.
It was definitely not the intent. And again, when we're talking, it depends on how we, where we fall on the coin flip on the Forest Service land use authority. If you wanted to tear down and rebuild the Wildcat Ticket Office, and the Forest Service is okay, and it's going to be twice as big in the same spot. They say yes, under how we're operating now, and we do the building permit. And the building and the structural review and approvals. So this is most, this was aimed at the private structures in the Albion Basin. Well, this was aimed at the private structures everywhere. They're not complying because right now you can't tear them down and rebuild them. And theoretically, you can't add on to them. So even though we say this, you still can't tear down and rebuild and add on up to 250 square feet unless it's okay with the Health Department and Salt Lake City Public Utilities. So they still have to approve it. But else, Wildcat, Skier Services, I mean, those things are
within, are non-compliant by your ordinance, so.
Non-compliant by the ordinance, but they're still on that federal property, federal land use status.
Because, because for example, we, in our master plan, which has been accepted by the Forest Service, is tearing down the Wildcat Ticket Office and replacing it. Expansion of skier services, they're both in that plan, just not in, not slated for in the near future. But they were initially approved at one point in time, accepted in their plan, I guess you could say.
And the reason they're non-compliant is because they're too close, it's too close to the creek?
Yeah, the definition that you, you changed that kind of said existing or something became, I'd have to go look at specifically, but yes, it is because they are too close to the creek, which is the setback, which that was kind of my questioning, is that a land use or is that a building code? Because, you know, they, it changes the status of those buildings.
That's, that's land use.
Yeah. And you're saying it's land use?
Correct.
Well then, okay, if it's land used, then we're not, it's not a non-compliant structure.
And in the past, the Forest Services, you know, they say they generally want to cooperate. But if it comes down to the 11th hour and they want to, and they want to put a, they want to allow or approve a building that's 40 feet away from the creek and we say no. I mean, they say they trump us.
Maybe this speaks to Mike's point obliquely. Oh, sorry, Elise, go ahead.
Looking for where you were.
Oh, I was just talking about, so it's this non-conforming thing. I, I sort of feel like when we were talking about this addition of 250 square feet, I thought we were kind of doing that non-conforming structure more, more for Albion Basin. But the way this reads is it's applying to the whole entire town. So if there's any non-conforming structures that are in the town boundary, 250 square feet applies to the whole town. And so there are, I think when I was looking at the zoning map, there is one building or one home that is within 50 feet of the stream in town, not in the Albion Basin. So that, that was something I brought up to John earlier today is I just wasn't sure if our intent with this 250 square feet, I kind of got the impression that was more for the upper Albion Basin. So I, and I could be wrong, but I just, I just kind of brought that point up to John earlier.
We started, we started with the upper Albion Basin. And then we figured, well, it doesn't make sense if we can be less restrictive in a proposed upper Albion Basin protection overlay zone in the remainder of town. So it did kind of, and it makes sense to apply that uniformly throughout the whole town. And 250 square feet is that much, like Walter could tear, which Walter has not been able to, under current regulations, both ours and state, tear down the shallow shaft and rebuild it. If this gets approved, and again, if it's okay with the Health Department and the Public Utilities, he could tear it down, rebuild it, and add to 150 square feet, which is a big deal for somebody like that. Same thing with the house. And there are a few houses that are probably too close to the creek. And, and if it's okay with the other authorities, they would be allowed to tear down, rebuild and expand, but not a lot.
And I just wanted to make sure, like, you know, we have, there's a lot of things in our code besides a stream setback that could make a structure non-compliant or non-conforming. And so this section of adding 250 square feet, I mean, we, when we wrote this in, and now that I've printed this out and had a chance to like really go through it today, it applies to everything in town. So I mean, talking about the Rustler, the Alta Lodge, any of the homes, if somebody is non-compliant, they can only add or, and they can only tear down and add 250 feet, square feet one time. So that was just, I just wanted to make sure that we really, that was our intent because that is a big deal for businesses or anybody in town. I know there's not a lot that are near a stream, but there's a lot of things that could make somebody non-conforming. So I just want to make sure that was our intent. That's kind of a big deal.
It is a big deal. And like the, the photo house, the shallow shaft, a few houses are non-compliant, not because of the stream, but because of lot size or property size. And, and they've been going nuts. I mean, the photo house and, and they would have loved to have torn down and rebuilt, but they couldn't. You tear it down and, and then if there's nothing on the property, you can't rebuild it because it doesn't meet the regs. So they didn't do what they wanted to do. So this is making it better for anybody who's currently non-compliant. And we used to just mix up the terms, non-compliant and non-conform. We just used them uniformly. Polly fixed that, but it was the same intent. You know, they were non-compliant. So we're doing, we're making it better for anybody who's non-compliant. And that's a good thing. We're not giving them the moon. But we're giving them a better option.
The other thing to think about too is just that, so let's say somebody is non-compliant on one side, you know, a lot of times you, sometimes they're non-compliant, the whole thing just doesn't meet code. But sometimes it's like one wall of it. So it's not that they can't do anything. It's just that, oh, they're too close to the stream on that portion. So the idea is always, the intent is to get them into compliance with the rules that you actually have as opposed to just being able to do whatever you want, just because you were lucky enough to have had a cabinet before. So.
So we're, we're one minute before four and I would like to take a, a couple of minutes in between this meeting and the town council meeting if we can. And so I think, I think we should adjourn this work session and be back in just a minute.
That sounds like a decree to me, so I'm going to get up and walk around. Or hobble around, I should say.
Just to note to anybody who's listening, we are still broadcasting. I'm not going to stop and restart that, but I stopped the recording for a moment. Thank you.
Before I mute, hello, Jarrett. You may be an hour early under our current setup.
On the current setup, no problem.
Although if Harris is listening, it would be in your purview to change things around if you so desire, but we have Marty here as well, so.
No worries.
Wait for the council members to get back. And I don't know, Polly, well, I'll just wait till I see people. Okay. Sheridan and Margaret, are you with us at the moment? Somehow I've misplaced my, oh, here. Agenda. Jen, oh, I see it, never mind. All right. I'd like to call the Alta Town Council Meeting of September 9th, 2022 order. This meeting will be an electronic meeting without an anchor location. I've already read a statement to that effect and an explanation of why at the beginning of the work session that we have just concluded, Polly, I don't need to read that a second time now, do I? Yeah, okay. Okay. So the first item on our, on our agenda is citizen input. Piper, is there, I think you have some written documents that you circulated. There may be, what else do we need to do with that? You, you need to unmute yourself, please.
Hi, sorry about that. Those are posted on the website. They are in the record, so I'm not sure that we really need to read them into the record.
I'd like to read mine if I may.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Sheridan.
Sheridan?
Thank you for the opportunity, Council Mayor, citizens of Alta that are present. I wanted to share some thinking around how a community center could best serve our town to create more community. The ideas that have been shared thus far are all admirable. I applaud the work that's been done to flesh out concepts to serve the broadest constituency imaginable in thinking about what community this center should serve. Some ideas include a new school, a general day lodge with public bathrooms, a hall for events that could serve both nonprofit and for-profit entities, offices, housing for our public servants. They're all concepts that I've heard emphasized in planning what this area might be used for. And I truly believe they're great ideas. They're also ideas for things that already exist in Alta. What we don't have is a proven means of creating deeper community in a mountain town. That means is affordable housing. Affordable housing could provide a linchpin for more community engagement. Affordable housing could be a strong revenue stream for the town. And affordable housing could be a small first step towards reducing the transient nature of the population that moves through Alta. Some might say that we already have affordable housing in Alta. It's known as employee housing. But are employees free if their work, housing, and community are all tied to their employment situation? People in our community have died by suicide because of less. How can residents be fully engaged in their communities if their unfettered opinions and actions might cost them their housing, job, and wider circle of belonging in their home in the world? I don't believe that the most beautiful places in the world should only belong to the most affluent people in the world. Is Alta forever to be a community of second homeowners, their property caretakers, and the employees of businesses in town? their property caretakers and the employees of businesses in town? We can dream better and we can do better in Alta. Of all the ideas shared about a potential community center, I believe the idea for affordable housing should percolate to the top and receive first priority emphasis. I've written this with hopes for a more diverse and stable community in Alta. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheridan. So I think that we don't have other public.
We do, Harris.
Okay.
Yeah, Del Draper, I'm going to promote him into the meeting. He should be joining us here in just a second. He'd like to make a comment.
Okay. Is there anybody else after that, Jen?
No.
Not so far. Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Dell, you have the floor, but you are muted if you can hear me. We don't see you either, for that matter.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for letting me comment. I think I think almost every public body has a complainer in residence and that person stands up at meetings and everybody knows what he or she's about to say and I really don't want to be that person. I would like to be in a position where I'm offering comments that are constructive and helpful. But I really can't do that here. The Secret Lake Cabin Owners Association opposes the Upper Albion Basin Overlay Protection Zone, and I've offered up reasons in prior meetings, so I'm going to try and be brief here and not go through those in great detail, but let me just highlight a couple of them. First, I think Alta, as a matter of policy, ought to support cabin owner remodeling with greater flexibility than the proposed ordinances allow. And I asked you last time to think about the analogy of the Watson Shelter and how that old cramped, dirty building was moved to a new site on the property owner's property, again, just using the analogy. And I think Alta is a better place for it, and I would like to see that same flexibility apply to cabin owners and allow them to improve their structures over time. Secondly, I think the cabin owners feel somewhat singled out here. If you're going to increase the size of the setback from the water, from the waterway, that should apply everywhere. There's no science to support the cabin owners pollute or damage the waterway in any way, in any manner that's different from other building owners at Alta. So and I may misunderstand in the work session, I realize I may not understand how that setback works, but if my assumption is that you're creating a greater setback in the overlay zone than elsewhere, that really seems to be singling us out and not based on sound policy. Next, I want to remind you that there's been no cabins built in the Secret Lake subdivision that are new since 1976 and no cabins have been built in the proposed overlay zones since 1980. So the existing regulatory structure has done a great job, if that is what is intended to do, preventing any new cabins from being built for 40 years. And it's not, it's not that no one's tried to build a cabin. There's been multiple attempts to build cabins. And Alta has spent a great deal of money over the years litigating to uphold its rules and prevent new cabins from being built. So it seems like the existing rules work. I don't know exactly why Town of Council has turned its sight now on the Upper Albion Basin for protection. It's a beautiful place and it preserves, deserves protection. But I'd say all of Albion Basin is a beautiful place and deserves protection. So I assume the thinking of the town has more to do than just protecting a beautiful environment. I assume it has something to do with the town's failed opposition to the Ellen Rossi Schrontz estate development and the pain of realizing that once they came up with a water source, they were able to move ahead and wanting to make sure that other people aren't able to do that in Albion Basin. Your new regs would be, you know, a nail in the coffin that I think would ever prevent development up there between the setback requirement and the requirement that people be connected to a sewer which there's no plan to ever build. And you've probably discussed with your council whether the passage of the ordinance is going to constitute a taking without compensation of those lots. You'll probably get a chance to litigate that if you enact this ordinance. I assume those landowners will claim it's a taking. I noticed the other day that my neighbor who owns four lots in the Secret Lake subdivision has them listed on ksl.com for $250,000 each, which I assume is just posturing in advance of trying to set some value for a future taking without compensation lawsuit. And I don't represent any of those people. Let me remind you that the Secret Lake Cabin Owners Association is exactly that, an association of cabin owners. And our concern is really that as you attempt to prevent future development in Albion Basin, you're you're enacting rules which impact the ability of the cabin owners to improve their cabins and maintain them in the future. Again, going back to the Watson Shelter analogy, I think more flexibility allowing the cabin owners to remodel would be a good thing. And for those reasons, the cabin owners oppose the Albion Basin Overlay Protection Zone ordinance. And I thank you for listening to me and I hope I do not become the complainer in residence at the Town of Alta. Thank you. Jen, I seem to be.
Thanks, Del. Sorry, I was moving you over. Sorry to cut you off.
Harris, you are muted.
Thank you, Elise. So I wanted to ask Del a question so that I could be clear about what it is that he's suggesting.
He's being moved back over.
Sorry for the delay and thanks, Elise. So can he, Dell, can you hear me? Well, he doesn't have to.
Okay, I can hear you now.
Okay, okay, there you go. So is the, is your group, the people who you are speaking for, including yourself, of course, are you suggesting that the status quo be continued? As opposed to the adoption of this new zoning ordinance?
Well, my concern is that people be able to remodel. Now, I hope I'm making the correct assumption that when you, when you pass an ordinance that increases the setback from any waterway and there are waterways up there, it puts us in a, in a position that I think is going to reduce people's ability to remodel.
So not compared to the status quo, but compared to some third alternative that you can imagine, I guess.
Well, I, you know, it's tough to know exactly how much remodeling can be done right now and and I I'm under the impression that this ordinance would further restrict people's ability to remodel. If I'm, if I'm wrong on that, then you know, maybe the status quo is better, but I look at something like Nick Gibbs Cabin that was designed to be a cube. It's the black metal one up there and was stubbed in to be a cube and they didn't have enough money, so they built only one floor of it. And it seems to me that that, and he's making some noises that I'm not really familiar with, that I know he'd like to complete the building of his cabin. And I think he's going to get pushed back under this new ordinance that he can't do that. And I look at Dottie Miles' shack and I think she ought to have some pretty freehand to remodel. So again, I, the problem is I may not fully understand what you're trying to do here, but to the extent that I have the impression that you are further restricting people's ability to maintain and remodel their cabins, then I'm not for that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for taking the time to address us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Jen, are we ready to move to the next item on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Which is an update from Marty Wolford from Salt Lake County, who is the person tasked in Salt Lake County with making sure that we comply with the Constitution and do our part in the census.
Hi, yeah, thanks for having me. So my name is Marty Wolford. I work for Salt Lake County Mayor Jenny Wilson in the Office for New Americans. And so we've been tasked with doing outreach and education for Census 2020 because we know that new Americans, which we define as anyone born outside of the United States, are undercounted historically in the census. So that's how I got this job. So a few updates for you. I'll start with just giving you a pretty quick idea of why the census is important. I've been doing outreach for the census for the past two years, so I kind of live and breathe this a bit. For people who don't know, the census, the 2020 census is the decennial census, so it happens every 10 years. So the last one was in 2010. This is how the federal government determines how trillions, in 2010 it was billions, and now we're up to trillions of dollars get spent and allocated to the states. And then the states allocate that money to communities. So there's a ton of money and some of the programs that the census funds are things like Medicaid. That's the largest federal program that the census helps to fund SNAP or food stamps, community health clinics, preservation, funding to repair roads. So for every person who doesn't do the census, Utah loses $1,860 for each year for 10 years. So each of us, if we don't participate in the census, we're responsible for $18,600 not coming to our state. And so for homes who have multiple family members, we could be getting up to hundreds of thousands of dollars that the state is losing because we're not participating. So a few things happened this year, you know, 2020 has been wild. I don't know if you all suffered hurricane-like storm winds yesterday and today. My power just came on a few hours ago. But all of the the weirdness that is 2020 has delayed the census. So originally, we were supposed to be wrapped up July 31st, so we were supposed to be done. COVID caused, you know, a lot of pressure and stress on the census, and so it got extended to October 31st. Then there was a lot of issues with Congress not approving that numbers get to the president. They were requesting a delay in that. There was no movement on that. And so then the Census Bureau, for them to be able to get accurate data on time, have now moved the census to end September 30th. So that's where we stand right now, that we have September 30th as the last day to participate in the census. There is a lawsuit. California is suing. I think New York is suing and a few other, I think tribes are suing to extend that back to October because the undercount really, it's people of color, low income people, historically undercounted people will be undercounted because of this moving it to September. The, there's a judge, a federal judge that just said that it it needs to go back to October. At this point, I don't know what's happening. I'm just going to go with telling you to plan on September 30th to be the last day of the census. So then, as far as participation, I'm sure I think Chris has given you a few updates on participation in Alta. So when we look at participation, we look at it on the county level, state level, and then city levels. So the state of Utah, 70% of people have done the census. In Salt Lake County, 73% of residents have done the census. Both of those are above the 2010 participation rate. Alta is at about 17.6%, which is low. You know, it's some of the data where you can find these statistics combined, Big and Little Cottonwood is one census area, which puts it 27.7%. But one data source was able to get it at 17.6 for Alta. So that's concerning. That's a very similar situation that a lot of resort towns in the state are are looking at if you have a lot of staff coming in and then leaving. Those Brian Head, Bryce Canyon, very, very, they're even below 17%. So these are tricky times with the census, with folks leaving before April 1st, which is the international census day. So our population count is official as of April 1. All the colleges that closed down because of COVID, students left. Colleges are still counting students, but parents are counting students. It's all kind of unprecedented times and it's hard to know what the result of all this will be. I think what's the most important to know is that the census, we rely on this data for the next 10 years. So if you're somebody and you're like, you know, I don't have kids, so schools, that doesn't really, that's not something I'm worried about. I'm healthy and funding for, you know, I'm income stable. So these programs that you mentioned, that's not something I'm worried about. You have to remember that in the next 10 years, anything could happen to any of us and and this is our community, right? And so this is how we make sure our friends, our neighbors and our family have the fallback, have the resources that they need. And we don't get another chance until 2030, like this is it. And this will drive what we can accomplish as far as improving our communities for the next 10 years. And so it's, it's really important. The census only takes less than 10 minutes to complete. You can do it online at my2020census.gov. You can do it over the phone. It's online and over the phone in 13 languages. And then right now, you might have experienced somebody knocking on your door and those are called enumerators or door knockers. And so they're trying to now follow up with folks who haven't participated in an attempt to get the data. And so what they're asking you is your name, how many people live in your house, your relationship to each other, birth dates and ethnicity and race. And it's, and that's how we count every single person in the United States is collecting that basic information. And I know if people don't like someone knocking on their door, I'm also working as an numerator, so I'm knocking on doors and I know people don't like it. But it's that important that now we're following up again with people to say we really need you to participate in this, so.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, please.
The 17% is 17% of what's the denominator you're using, right? I can understand you have the number of people who have completed the.
So that would be household, that would be housing units. So 17% of addresses that receive mail, not to a P O box, but to an actual home address. That's who the census has on their list of their master address file. So that's who they're they're counting. So 17% of that list has responded.
And then do you happen to know how, where we stand as a community compares to the last time this was done in 2010?
So 2010, it says, and it's, you know, that's 10 years ago. And so I don't know, do you know, was Alta an actual designated town or city in 2010? Because right now, what I found is it's showing only 1.5%, which seems unlikely, but the combination of Big and Little Cottonwood canyons, so Brighton and Alta, it was 45.5%.
Yeah, well, Brighton was in the unincorporated county until recently.
Until, yeah.
Incorporated municipality for 50 years, so.
Okay. So that 1.5, I don't feel like that's very reliable. But that's, I only was able to find that on one data set. So I can go and ask some of the, there's a state data center, the Kim Seagarden Policy Institute has a census data person, and I can see if she can get me a better figure than that.
We have a lot of, a lot of people who would have been here on April 1st or not here on April 1st this year, as, as you pointed out. And what do you suggest we, we do?
I think, really, I think what we're seeing, at least down in the valley, is, you know, this human connection, talking to people one-on-one, anything that there's like some type of communal event happening, which, you know, they're far and few between these days. But we're going and we're tabling at them and we're talking to people. And we have, you know, you can do the census on a smartphone, but then we also have like a tablet with us, and we're asking people, have you done it? And just having conversations and then assisting them if they need to do the census. The folks who haven't done the census, I think, are people, you know, who internet connectivity is an issue. Having technology, COVID definitely, we know a lot of people dropped the internet. They may not have a computer. If there's any like language or cultural barriers, not everybody knows what the census is. They, they don't understand the importance of it. They just know that the government is asking questions, and they don't know why, and they don't trust it. So I think being able to have conversations, to talk through, like this is how we get money into our cities and towns and our county, and it funds things. I mean, anything that might be important to somebody, you can find a connection to the census funding it. It really funds everything. And so I know it's more, it's harder work to do it that way, but I think we're at the point where social media and news have reached as many people as we can, and we just have to start doing face-to-face connections. And so I would just encourage everyone, if you've done it, talk to your friends and neighbors, make sure that they've done it, and really express how easy it was, if your experience was easy, and I hope it was, to, to complete it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Excuse me, Harris, could I ask a question? I noticed that you said that primarily this is done by addresses and not by post office boxes. Alta receives no mail via street address, and most of us have trouble getting anything even delivered to a street address versus a home. And so that's a concern, and I'm wondering how that's dealt with nationally. And secondly, as you said, a resort community, even our businesses are not in a position that they're getting people that they've hired, who may end up living in their employee housing. Those people are likely not here by September 30th. And the same, by the same token, they, they left before April 1st. And so we have a circumstance where legally, can you claim somebody who's not yet here? No. So there, there is a problem that we're then bound for 10 years, and there doesn't seem to be a mechanism, maybe constitutionally even, to account for this kind of circumstance and undercounting that likely is not only here but elsewhere.
Yeah, great question. So what should have happened is anyone, most likely, so those of you who, who live in Alta, did you receive census information on your doorstep? Like, did somebody from the Census Bureau come and leave a paper questionnaire and with information on how to do it online or over the phone? Does that not sound familiar to anyone?
Well, we did get, we did get a bag on the door, and I believe we got something mailed as well. But of course, it went to the post office box.
Okay, so you did get something in your P.O. box. So what should have, what should have happened is that you should have received, the way that they do that in a lot of places in rural Utah and southern Utah as well, is they go to door-to-door and they leave something. I know when that happened at Brighton, a big storm blew through and blew everybody's, everything off everyone's porches. So they had to do that just like two months ago. They, the Census Bureau went and did that. So if that doesn't sound familiar, then that's definitely concerning. And I can follow up with the local census office about that. But that's how everyone should have been notified initially, invited is how they would phrase that, invited to participate in the first place, was receiving something if you all use P.O. boxes. So that's how they tried to like work around communities that don't have mail directly to their doors. So then the, the comments about, so you, you participate in the census by saying you report where you were on April 1st. So if people left before April 1st, they're going to count at where they were at on April 1st. And, and I, I haven't heard any conversations about how that will be kind of made right, because the impact is going to be large on so many communities. But it is something that I bring up with the county folks about, that this is the reality in Salt Lake County, that I'm hearing it from Brighton, I'm hearing it from Alta, like. And I, and I don't know what the next step is, but I am sharing that concern and letting people know it's going to be a major problem for our whole state. I mean, we're, we're going to see that in so many parts of our state, and I'm not sure how the state is going to respond to it, but I'm assuming. I have no idea. That's above my pay grade. I don't even know how to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. We will see what we can do over the next few weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda, we're, we're a few minutes behind schedule now, but Mike Mon, Alta Ski Area update, if you would share with us what's going on from your point of view.
From the council, a couple of things, as summer's winding down here, we've, we are planning to, the last night for the campground's going to be September 12th. And it's booked every weekend through then. Our fee booth will, will probably remove the fee bill booth on, after Sunday, September 13th. Well, no, we'll, we'll stop daily operations and take that back. After Sunday, September 13th, the booth will still be there, and we'll operate it on Saturday and Sunday, maybe Friday have a day through the end of September. We'll reevaluate at that point in time whether to keep that in place a little longer than that or not. We'll keep the Iron Ranger in place and keep it going. We've closed the campground store, cleaning that will be met down. And you know, as long as the road is open, we intend to keep the restrooms up and running. The visits to the campground have been, or to the Albion Basin. Last year, we had 11,941. This year, we've had 22,725 through today.
Vehicles.
Vehicles coming in up to the, into the Albion Basin. Those are people that would have paid something to go through the, that's paying, that's just the paying traffic now. Not including the traffic associated with, you know, cabin owners and construction traffic and so forth. So we, like everywhere else on the Loasatch, we've seen a significant increase in demand. We do recognize, however, we did open the summer road a few weeks earlier this year. We'll let, attributed to that, but we have seen that, you know, probably our top, five of the top busiest days that we recorded, vehicles going into Albion Basin occurred this summer. We have, in regards to our summer projects, we're wrapping up our work on the Devil's Castle Road. Some grading we've done, we have done there, all the, all the grading is done. We're just primarily doing revegetation work. We're pleased to see that the revegetation work done on the Sunny Side Pitch is already growing grass that was done earlier this year. We're also undertaking now some trail work, installing an approved trail that will go from the Catherine's Trailhead, paralleling the summer road up to the Alf Service Road. And eventually, that trail would parallel the road and continue on up to the Secret Lake parking lot area. We have been, we're still wrapping up our weed pulling. We've, you know, we've surveyed and pulled weeds with the help of Cottonwood Canyon's Foundation, the friends of Alta, over 101 acres, they're within the town of Alta. We've planted over 3,000, we've planted approximately 3,754 native plants from seeds that were gathered last fall. We are actively gathering seeds now, from plants to plant for next summer. We have 1,300 seedlings, trees that we will be planting September 17th. We, additionally, this has been an event we've involved the general public with. And due to COVID this year, we are just going to do that with our employees. We're going to take our employee force and plant all those trees. We are actively planning and trying to prepare for the 2021 winter season. The National Ski Areas Association came out with their, their guide for opening. It's called Ski Well, Be Well. We've been looking, going through that, and also we've spent a fair amount of time talking to other businesses and entities that have been open during the pandemic. Ski areas in New Zealand, Australia, locally, we've talked to, we've had a visit to Lagoon. And then we've had a lot, a fair amount of discussion with other areas that have had summer operations open as we try to refine, you know, what will Alta's winter operation plan be? We know it will be different than it's been in the past, and our capacity will be less. The Cottonwood Canyon Ski Area is Alta, Snowbird, Brighton, and Solitude. Plan on meeting with the Forest Service, I believe, next Friday. Salt Lake City Watershed and Salt Lake County to review kind of the plans and, and get their approval within the next couple of weeks. Our current, our target opening date continues to be the Saturday before Thanksgiving, conditions permitting. We're, we've, our targeted closing date is maybe open every day through April 18th and potentially opening for one additional weekend. That will be, of course, conditions permitting. As we look at this season, we recognize that our, given the guidelines and procedures that we'll need to put into place to try to minimize the spread of the virus and keep our employees and guests safe as possible and operate. Restrooms and restaurants are, we recognize are going to be pinch points for us. We might be able to have, you know, they may be operating at about 40% of their normal capacity to preserve physical distancing. We've got to simplify our processes in them. We're looking at things like maybe a food truck in the Wildcat Parking Lot to allow guests to eat in their cars. Working through, trying to get some approvals to do something like that with the, first, we have to get the Forest Service on board. We're also looking at maybe even considering some, some yurts on the mountain for additional shelter for guests without the weather. The, some of the basics that we have, as we know that we are moving towards face coverings will be required in this ski area. Looking, you know, of course, our cleaning and disinfection guys will be up, and physical distancing will be dressed, employee wellness checks, screening. The, one of the things that Harris or the town, I would ask, it seems like all of the businesses in the town are trying to figure out what we're going to do with when we do have some positive cases show up in the winter during the town? And how, how do we quarantine or isolate? Everybody's looking at setting aside some rooms and such to do something like that. But we may, we may need to get these people out of the canyon or the altitude. And wondering, Harris, if, if there are some public resources that may be available in the valley that Alta businesses could send employees down to for isolation or quarantine? I don't know if anything like that has been developed or underway. And then the other, the other question that I, I think that I'd like to see us work on as a town is, and with Dr. Ken, is that we're able to have testing here locally done in a rapid way, that we're not, you know, sending people down to the valley to get tested. Those are a couple of things we've noted, and in talking with some other businesses, others have some interest in. And, you know, just be it's something that maybe we should consider as a town. And that's the end of my report. Any questions?
Thanks, Mike. I will tell you that I know that there have been hotel spaces that have been used for quarantine, especially early on for medical personnel. I don't know how they were paid for, but I will look into that question with Salt Lake County Health Department. I have engaged with them about testing. That there are complications in terms of the, which test we were to, would use and how quickly the results would be returned and what we would do with that information and how we would interpret that information. I've also asked them to give me their opinion monitoring COVID in the sewage coming out of Alta, since we have a single sewage line. Again, there are issues of the response time to, from when the test is taken, the sample is taken, and cost, and what you do with that information. It's a bunch of complicated issues, but I, I have been engaged with them on those questions.
Thank you for doing that. One other thought is, is I don't know if, as a town or as a community, should we consider, rather than everyone designating area, quarantine areas in their respective employee housing, because it makes some sense for us all to kind of join together and say, let's, let's designate one wing of a hotel or some area to be their quarantine area, and all of, all of us contribute to maybe pay some cost for that. So that, you know, rather than to kind of consolidate that, those quarantine types areas. I don't know if that makes some sense or, or not.
I know that the university has designated not just space in each dorm, but full dorm buildings as such. And they've actually populated them now, unfortunately. In fact, that was the reason UNC closed as quickly as they did, was they filled up all of their quarantine, designated quarantine spaces in the first week.
We would be, we'd be interested as a company to, if the, the town or other businesses were interested in trying to consolidate that.
Yeah, I, I was assuming that I'd be talking to the businesses about the, the testing of this, of this sewer line costs as well. I'm trying to share that across the various entities. Okay, well, thanks for that.
I also have one question for Mike, if, if that's okay. This seems maybe old now, but the trail that comes from the transfer toes that goes up towards the upper parking lot near the snow pine, that trail, there's a sign there that says, you know, go this direction. You go that way, and at the end, you run into the re-vedge matting before you actually get to the trail work that they were doing at the very top. So I don't know what happened there, but I think that that either needs to be removed for a section so people don't get caught up and tripped in that netting or something. Otherwise, you're taking that dirt road, the driveway, that's just right next to the snow pine chair and adjacent to the snow pine lodge property. So that was the only question, if you knew about that or if there was a plan to correct that next summer or something.
Let me, I'll, I'll look into it and see if I can find out.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Um, next item on the agenda, um, and then we'll get to Jay uh, from the UFA is the approval of the consent agenda. Um, the August twelfth, twenty twenty meeting minutes, the treasurer's report and the various staff reports.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda, uh, approve the consent agenda as proposed. Second.
Okay, thank you. Is there discussion about this? Um, hearing none, then I will um, ask for those who uh, would like to uh, approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Okay, that sounded like all five. I think there were no, no nos. Okay. Move on to the next item, which is uh, the UFA and Jay. Um, you are here with us, Chief.
How's it going? Thank you. Uh, so I'll just go over uh, some of the talking points for UFA uh, for the past month. Uh, it's been a busy month for us.
We're losing some audio, sorry.
Sorry about that. Are you able to hear me now a little bit better?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. It's been a busy month for us in many ways. Um, unfortunately, we've had a couple of uh, one current firefighter who passed away and one retired firefighter who passed away. Um, the uh, the current firefighter uh, was currently working in one of our stations, was an active member of UFA. And uh, unfortunately took his own life. Um, we had a service for him a couple of weeks ago. And it's, it is uh, you know, it's just one of the realities that, that we have in our line of work, unfortunately. Um, and it's something that, uh, that I think we have programs in place to help people as much as possible, but even with those programs in place. And I know many of you are, are aware of this just based on uh, some of the folks uh, up at Alta in recent years, um, faced similar circumstances. So um, we do the best that we can to help our employees and, and their families uh, with those, those uh, issues that they may be working through. Um, the second uh, retired firefighter is considered a line of duty death. He retired about three years ago, but he was very involved with the response to uh, nine eleven and uh, died of uh, after a long battle with, with cancer um, over the last couple of years. And his services are tomorrow. Um, we had a USAR deployment, so our Urban Search and Rescue Team was involved with the USAR or a deployment to uh, Louisiana uh, with the hurricane that came through there towards the end of August. Uh, we sent eighty members of that team to Louisiana. That team is made up mostly of UFA personnel, but we do have contributors from uh, Draper City, Park City, Salt Lake City, South Jordan, West Jordan, and West Valley. So several departments in the valley participate in that team. Um, they uh, responded to Louisiana. Uh, luckily, it was a short trip for them. Um, they were only there for a couple of days and the damage uh, in the area that they were sent to was somewhat limited. And so they, they got to return home safely. Uh, but it's, it's always those mobilization exercises, even though they didn't get to do a whole lot of work once they got there. Um, it's good practice just mobilize that whole, if you can imagine moving eighty people. Their equipment and everything that they need to sustain themselves for the first several days are things that they take with them. So it's a big production to get them going and it's good practice. Even, even if they get turned around. We're glad they got turned around because that, that means that there wasn't um, a lot of uh, uh, you know, people that were hurt and people that needed help. So that's, that's a good thing. Um, we also had what's called an EMAC deployment. Um, a couple of weeks ago, that's Emergency Management Assistant Cooperative. And it's a state to state cooperative that's set up that states can request assistance from other states when they are um, are, are having need for assistance. So this was specific for Wildland Fire. Um, and we sent a large contingency to the state of California two and a half weeks ago. Um, I, I was able to participate in that and, and went as, as an agency representative. So um, again, it was a cooperative effort with UFA. Uh, we had West Valley, um, Draper, several departments from Utah County as well as Park City. So we sent two task forces down there with eight fire engines. Uh, leadership built within those fire engines as well as overhead leadership to make sure that they, they were operating appropriately. Um, a total of thirty-four people traveled to Northern California. Um, we were sent to the, uh, originally we were headed to the Santa Cruz area, but we got diverted in route um, because of the severity of some of the fires in a different part of the state. And so we ended up uh, just north of Chico, California. Um, on the BTU complex fire, uh, ended up on the Elkhorn Fire, which initially was thirty thousand acres. And I think by the time we left, it was, it was close to sixty thousand acres. Um, but things are so busy right now down there that they didn't have any outside resources to help them. We were the first outside resources to arrive and, and offer them. They, they'd been working hard on this fire uh, for over seven days with just the stations that they have in that area um, working on it. Uh, so when we got there, there were, there were less than a hundred firefighters committed to the fire. And when we left, there were about twelve hundred. So they were able to garner additional support from federal resources from other parts of the state as well as other resources from outside of the state of California. We were there actually working for fourteen days. Um, and it was, our crews got great experience. Um, they were working in heavy timber with uh, extreme fire behavior. And uh, they did a fantastic job and the, the most important thing is they, they did it safely. So no injuries or any kind of problems or any equipment problems to any of our, our folks while we were down there. Um, we got back Sunday evening and received almost an immediate uh, re-up or request to respond again. Um, so we just sent uh, two task forces out again this morning back to right now they're in route to Northern California. That could always change um, prior to them getting there based on the severity in California or elsewhere. Uh, Chief Peterson came into my office this morning. We chatted about uh, about things and his, his old hometown of Medford, Oregon um, is, is on fire right now. And it's, it, he was really amazed. He had some videos to show us and um, it's, it's burning in places that you would have never thought would have burned. Um, it's not a town built on a hill. It's flat. Um, it's just been super dry there and uh, they had the conditions were just right with the wind and, and just the right condition to, to blow the fire right through a couple of towns. So um, and that's the case uh, in, in many parts of Oregon. And you've seen in many parts of California with high temperatures, um, very, very dry conditions and thing, things are ripe for uh, continued fire. I mean, we're not even into California's fire season yet. It's typically later in the fall. And so the things that we're seeing now, I think are going to continue throughout the fall. And unfortunately, um, you know, I don't, I don't know that there's a lot that uh, that, that can be done to stop them. Um, you know, hopefully we're just able to help uh, mitigate them as quickly as possible and, and uh, keep people safe. Um, we are in the middle of our recruitment. We've gone through the entry level testing. We had three hundred and ninety-seven people take our written exam. With that, we move people, we have a cutoff score and move people into um, interviews and physical testing. And then we create a list based on, on how people do in the test. Uh, it's anticipated right now that we'll probably have a recruit school this coming winter with twenty-five um, new recruits going through that. It's all based all on retirements. Um, but as of right now, we have about twenty-five openings for new positions. We're also in the process of uh, our captain's, captain's promotional process, and that's a uh, written exam as well as performance exams. It'll be happening over the next month or two um, that we create a list from. And then if, if there is a retirement or a, a change in uh, position, then, then we move people into those positions based on how they performed on that uh, that testing process. Um, as far as call statistics, so far in quarter three for the town of Alta, there have been eight total calls. Five of them were EMS calls. Two of them are what we consider to be false calls. And so that would be, um, that would be an alarm call, like a smoke alarm or a, a fire detection system that, that, that goes off. And it's not actually something that uh, is an actual fire. And then one was a, a good intent call. So that could be um, something like a medical call that we were called on initially. But when we get there, it is, is not actually a, a medical call. Maybe someone just needed some system to clean up or um, wasn't actually an emergency. So that's, that's the breakdown of those eight calls. Uh, I do understand that we had our fuels reduction crews up in the town of Alta um, this last month. Uh, it's my understanding that all of the fuel was taken care of that, that had been cut. If that's not the case, you know, please let me know so that we can get the fuels crews to return. I was working with Chris Colley and, and I think that there was some problems with uh, some of their equipment initially, but I believe that they have returned and been able to take care of of all of that. Um,
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up with Chris. He's, he's on vacation this week.
Okay. Uh, that's it for me. It kind of a long report, but uh, any questions for me?
Well, thanks, Jay. Um, I see a wristband on your left hand there. Have you been, were you at a concert?
Yep, we uh, we have a concert every day here at the EOC.
That's what gets you into the building, huh?
Exactly. I'm in the VIP section.
Okay. Good, well.
They make me buy all my own drinks though. Darn it.
Thanks, thank you for your dedication. And I've, I've, you know, as a board member, I get those emails about you uh, being deployed to California and um, that's uh, I'm glad that you find it to be a valuable uh, learning opportunity, but uh, stay safe. It's a big deal out there. I, I read that they have another two hundred thousand acres in one fire just over from yesterday. It's grown that much, so.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it, it seems odd that we send people from here down, but I think that, that what we bring back um, is, is so valuable. It's an opportunity for, for some of our newer firefighters to be exposed to um, things that, that they may not have been exposed to, to this point in their careers. It also is a great opportunity for, for our Wildland Fire Leadership Group to be developed and to be put into situations where if it happens here, they've seen it before and will be able to, to work effectively um, if it happens here. Hopefully it never does.
Well, I gotta say, you know, between pandemic, earthquake, smoke, wind, the locusts show up, I'm gonna get really nervous because I'm the oldest in my family and the, the, the death of the first born is like the ultimate last plague, so. I guess you're not the one to call for the locusts. Okay, thanks, Jay.
Keep us sympathies, Chief, on the loss of your colleagues. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the entire council for that.
Yeah, thanks, Sheridan. Okay, um, questions regarding the departmental reports? Okay, let me move on to um, my report, but um, as part of that, I asked uh, the folks from INIAD to come. Um, although I guess we, y- you guys have been on this call for a little while now. Sorry that we didn't have that worked out a little bit better. But uh, anyway, if you, if, as part of my report, you could give a, a, a report about what you've been up to and uh, with the community center, I guess Jared, are you, or, or Don, you're going to?
Sure.
Uh, do you, do you know all of our town council members?
Not everyone. We've met, we've met quite a few people. I see a lot of familiar faces, but I don't think everyone.
Yeah, so Jared and Don are the people who are uh, really leading the effort for their community center scoping and planning.
We can't forget Elodie.
No. Elodie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
All right, I was looking to.
I know, it's, it's hard with these greens.
Someone else.
Show up, so.
Yeah. Uh, should we start?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Uh, I'll, I'll kick off and then uh, turn over to my colleagues. So first of all, thank you for inviting us to um, come discuss uh, the progress on the community center feasibility study that we're, that we've been undertaking. So just very briefly, uh, in case you're not um, familiar with how the project was set up, i- it's really relying very heavily uh, on uh, the research that we can undertake, working um, with people locally in, in the community. So uh, there's been a significant amount of engagement directly with members of the community through uh, open call town hall meetings. There's of course the advisory committee who we've been meeting with regularly. Um, I think Mike is here tonight and has been super helpful on that. And there are of course other contributing members who've kind of guided us to uh, you know, what, what aspects of the community and the landscape and the site we should be sitting most closely. And of course, we, we have a wonderful shepherd in John Goldner who meets with us weekly to make sure we're staying on track. Um, in terms of our expertise and our uh, partnering consultants on the project, ag- again, we're relying um, both on local experts. Uh, the town was good enough to provide a, a local avalanche consultant who's intimately to your place and that will give us valuable um, insights, information. And then in terms of constructability and selection of materials and systems that, that will be reasonable and efficient, uh, that will be part of the scoping proposal, we're relying on Big D, who I think many of you know, they're a large construction company um, down in, in Salt Lake City. And we've worked with them before. Then in terms of our own team, um, from INIAD, Jared has really been leading the charge on this, working very closely with Elodie and Keriston. I don't think Carrie is here tonight. Uh, and we also have a few other consultants who are working with us, Atelier Ten, who are uh, recognized experts in sustainable design and, and low impact construction. And also Lyra, our structural engineer, um, who have a, a tremendous amount of knowledge in resisting strong lateral forces. Actually, we work with them on blast resistant construction all the time and uh, if we're nothing else, it's that an avalanche is, is quite an impressive blast. So we're happy to have them. So I think with no uh, further ado, I'll turn over to my colleagues to give you the update.
Great, thanks, Don. Well, thank you everyone in the town council for, for uh, having us present tonight. Um, and it was, thank you all for those of you who participated in many of our virtual conversations as well. That's been really helpful. As, as Don mentioned, um, we've been, been embarking on this feasibility study for the community center site. We've gotten through a process of having many of these community level engagements and working with the advisory committee to determine a space program for the proposed community center. And we'll show you a little bit about that tonight, um, where we've arrived to. We've set some guiding principles. Um, and we've started to understand some of the logistics on the sites. And we want to share with you uh, a little bit about where we are currently and then where we hope to go in the next month or so as we look to develop uh, conceptual designs and share them with you. And then roll this all into a report which will be used to um, understand a better sense of the cost for this potential project in the future. So um, as I mentioned, I just want to recap a little bit. Um, Elodie and I will talk a little bit about the process that many of you uh, participated in, and then I'll share with you the program and uh, maybe highlight some of the key spaces that we've sort of um, figured out with the advisory committee um, that we're quite excited about and then share with you what we think our next steps are. Um, so just as, as a highlight, we um, approached a multi-pronged community engagement process. We wanted to both um, speak with everyone, you know, uh, all given circumstances, we had to do this virtually. That's not our, the way that we would usually do this. We would much prefer to be there in person and have these conversations. So um, it's, it's been a learning curve for us as well, um, doing this remotely. Um, but thank you all for your patience. Um, so we started in the middle of, of July. We wanted to make sure that we were reaching a very broad audience as well as to talking to people on one-on-one. Um, so Elodie um, designed a Um, so Elodie, um, designed a, uh, website, uh, W W W Alta Community Center dot com. Um, that is used to post resources to let everyone know who we are, what we're up to, where we are in terms of the process, um, schedule events. Um, and then it also has a survey function where we can ask questions. Um, and we've used that to help guide us as well. Um, and many of you participated in our small group virtual workshops, where we spoke to different members of the community and talked about aspirations for the community center and started to unpack, um, some, some desires and needs for different programs. Um, and then we had a, uh, what we call the virtual open, um, conversation where we talked sort of thematically about different aspects of the community center based on what we had heard and we gathered more details. Elodie, do you want to share who we heard from?
Yes. Um, so it was, uh, like Jared said, a kind of a three-pronged approach. The first one being the website that would have the largest, reach, um, be seen by the most people. So we had 50 unique survey responses there. Where we were able to gather data from what makes Alta unique to the responder, to what programs they attend and what vision they have for the community center. Uh, we also had 33 small group participants who came and were able to talk to us more, in more length about their desires for the community center. And five additional new voices we heard at the, uh, open workshops. Um, the breakdown of overall was that 60% of the people we spoke to either live or work in Alta year round. Uh, 23% live or work in Alta seasonally. And 17% are visitors or have been previously affiliated with the town in some, um, some way or another. The survey itself skewed more towards the visitor and then the small group participation, uh, chat skewed more towards the people that live and work in Alta year round.
Great, thanks Elodie. We feel pretty good that we, we spoke to many of the people, um, that we had hoped to. So again, thank you all. Um, based on all that, that we heard, um, and in our conversations with our advisory committee, we developed, um, what we're calling a guiding, set of guiding principles for the community center, which are sort of big umbrella, sort of brackets that help us, define what the community center, um, wants and, and needs to be. Um, so I'll, I'll just read these. I think they're all, they're all sort of big statements, but help us sort of narrow the trajectory of, of the vision of the center. Um, the community center is envisioned as a resource where the Alta community will gather for the wellbeing of its members. So we've talked a, a lot about different programs, um, that ACE puts on. Um, we also talked about, um, physical activity. We also talked about mental health. So we're really looking at wellness as a kind of overarching need to socialize, sometimes actually even, um, space to get away and, and not socialize. Um, so centering around community wellbeing was top priority. Um, it was also, um, we sort of unpacked the need for the center to articulate, um, the story of Alta, both from the perspective of its, its history, but also its ecologies and educate, folks who may be visiting, um, about the ongoing stewardship of the place. Um, we heard a lot about, you know, uh, the trailhead facilities where we might begin to tell, um, hikers and backpackers, um, about the, um, environment that they're about to see and explore. And, and go beyond telling them what to do and what not to do, but actually tell them why. Um, so we think really telling the story, um, is quite important. And also we understand that there's a lot of artifacts from the Alta Historical Society, um, that we might begin to just display in the center as a way to talk about the places, mining history and its history and, and avalanche. Um, prevention. Um, two other big aspects, um, that we talked about, we think that the, center will need to be financially sustainable, that it won't be a burden to the town, um, financially. But that it also needs to be an, an exemplar of environmental stewardship. So it needs to have a high sustainability benchmark. And we'll talk a little bit, um, in a moment about how we see that unfolding. So in terms of the program, we sort of worked with the advisory committee to, um, refine everything that we heard. Um, and also from our experience, build in what we know needs to be there to allow the center to function. Um, so we broke that into sort of three broad categories. Um, the first one called must have. Those are things that, uh, the building can't, uh, exist without fire stairs, bathrooms, um, mechanical space, electrical space. Um, spaces for maintenance, um, spaces for facilities, um, those kinds of aspects to the community center which, um, take up about 35% of, of any project of this size and scale. Um, we also determined things that the center needed to have programmatically. Um, and many of those things are items like, um, space for nonprofit organizations, um, for ACE and for Friends of Alta. Um, a sort of co-working office space, um, with some, we talked about an idea for some flex offices, that could be either rented or utilized, um, by the town or by, um, local practicing physicians. And we also discussed, uh, the, the potential for, um, both the post office as well as the Alta school. Um, so we've sort of taken all of those, um, components and we, we dropped it into this aspect we call need, which is about, 11%, which leaves about half of the building, um, as a wo- would like, which are all the things that we heard. Sort of outside of those issues from the community that would be helpful to meet the goals, um, that were stated before. And I'll highlight some of those, um, for you. Um, they included, um, many gathering spaces, uh, multi-purpose functions, for ACE events and others. Um, and we can show you some of what we've been talking about. Um, trailhead, uh, spaces for exhibition for both Alta Historical Society, potentially a changing exhibition space that could be for, local artists or to tell local stories. Um, very important, this idea of a, a gathering space, a place for people to come together, a kind of center, of, of the community center. Um, and we'll show you some thoughts we had about that as well. Um, coffee shop, small retail space. Those really all kind of ground the center together. Um, what we've sort of been able to work through, um, in terms of how this center might begin to function, um, is represented in this sort of bubble diagram, graphically on the screen. Um, we imagine that you'd come in the front door, you'd be presented with a lobby. There may be someone there to give you some information or help you along your way, but you really sort of enter into, um, a common lounge, which is the central gathering point within the community center. Around that, um, a coffee space, a retail position. Um, the post office, which we understand is very important, a place for, that people come and, and see, uh, each other very frequently. Off to the left are, are those activities that, um, are about bringing people together that you might go to a particular event. Um, and those are the, the multi-purpose functions, the fitness functions, um, educational programs, the Alta school, um, and the trailhead here, which would be access from the outside of slope. Um, and then we have many programs which, which go to support the facility, including, um, those facilities functions I mentioned before. In addition, we've been looking at, um, some small housing aspects. Um, uh, someone for what we're calling a caretaker. We think this facility would need a full-time, um, staff position to take care of the facility. So, um, we're accommodating for space for a small apartment for them as well as an additional apartment for, um, the police force, first responders. Um, in terms of staffing, we're thinking to be quite economical, that we can probably staff the building minimally, um, and, and flexibly. So there may be someone who is at a front desk position, but they probably do a lot of different things. They might also, um, help folks at the post office. They might also help schedule events, um, in some of the multi-purpose, spaces. In addition to that, um, the retail functions probably would have their, their own staff and support. Um, so I'll just take you through some of the primary spaces that we've been thinking about and talking with. We sort of work in the abstract, um, here to sort of envision spaces sort of outside of any design. But it's just to give you a sense of the scale and to make sure that we've got the right amount of square footage earmarked. Um, this is what we're calling, right now, the community hub, although we're looking for a better name. This is really the center point of the community center where you come in. There's a, a place to be greeted, an information desk. Um, there's a common, um, lounge for gathering or for, um, um, relaxing. Um, and around that are the retail functions, the coffee functions and the post office. So this place, becomes a hub of activity because there's, there's, there's circulation happening all around it and people. Um, and of course, you know, we would want to capitalize on, on the great people looking south there and that we really see this as, as the primary center of the community center. And you can see here some of the square footages that we're earmarking. So, some of the conversations we've been having with the advisory committee are really about right sizing this to make sure that we're not including too much space. Um, but that we're including just enough. Um, another big, uh, sort of, uh, marquee program that came out of many of our conversations is, the idea of a large gathering multi-purpose space. Uh, and through our discussions, we talked about, uh, the, the idea of a large hall that could be subdivided. So you could open it all up. It could house really large events, but you could also break it down so it could be used for multiple, different, um, functions at the same time. So it's, um, highly flexible, highly efficient. Um, here you can see we've started to sort of right-size this currently. It's at 4,500 square feet. Um, for reference, um, Our Lady of Snow is that central gathering space is about 1,300 square feet. So this would be, a little over three times the size. Um, but what it does is it gives you the opportunity to open it all up, to have a very large gathering or to break it down. And here, this is just an example. Um, we've shown this as a lecture format in the center, which would seat around 175 people. So this might be for a film screening. Um, here, um, we've just shown it as ping pong tables and a kind of, active lounge space. And on the other side, a larger gathering or a conference for 60 seats. If you can imagine, um, opening that back up and trying to make the entire space, um, full, we can probably fit about 375 people. So that's a really large gathering space. And through our conversations, we talked about that really being a great amenity for the community, both, um, in terms of gathering for events, but, uh, but even as, as a leasable function in terms of the, you know, financial plan for the center. Um, we've been starting to think about how the space might feel more comfortable. I mean, given the current circumstances we're in. During the pandemic, we're all becoming very aware of access to light and air, um, access to space. So, as we've been thinking about these large gathering spaces, we're also thinking about glass, doors, places to allow natural ventilation, places to be able to see outside so that you don't feel contained. We want this place to feel, really welcoming, really inviting. And we think those, those things are really important. Um, well, we don't know where, where the future holds for us. We're also trying to just be aware about what, how many people could this hold, um, in a socially distanced, um, uh, event, let's say. So here we've laid it out, um, with six foot wide desks and we fit about 65 people. So you can see, depending on how much square footage per person, um, you use the, the amount of people you can hold changes drastically. Um, so that's, that's also another, another key aspect of the center. And we've talked a lot about the, the, the variety of different kinds of uses, which are listed off to the right. Um, some other aspects, um, that we've talked about, we talked about having a dedicated fitness space, um, for some wellness programs, either fitness programs or yoga programs, so that they're not using the same multi-purpose space, um, so that they can be more, um, clean and more, more highly maintained. Um, we have a space, 600 square feet for a dedicated education space for some of ACE's programs as well as a teaching kitchen. Um, another important program that we talked a lot about is the Alta School. Whether or not it moves here in the future, we just wanted to have a sense for, how could it work here? Um, so we, we worked with Nikki to right-size the classroom to think about how it could work best for her, um, and her students currently and will, will continue to develop this. But currently we're holding about 1200 square feet, which has a space for movable, uh, furniture, a, a small group area off to the side. Um, while, you know, because it is a one-room classroom, it needs to have sort of different areas within it to facilitate teaching, um, uh, different ages and different grades, kitchen. Um, we talked a lot about the synergies between, uh, the potential Alta School and a reading room. Um, so we were sort of earmarking an adjacency there that the reading room, um, might be located next door to Alta School. We can see a lot of benefits to that and also an outdoor space. Um, here, uh, kind of idealized reading room, um, with some cute computer workstations, a common work table, and a lot of books and storage. Uh, here, another, another, uh, unique aspect of the center, we think is this idea of a kind of non-for-profit hub that is really, really flexible. Um, so what we've been earmarking in terms of the program is, is it, an office for ACE, an office for Friends of Alta. But then two, what we're calling flex offices, which, um, could support other nonprofits who want to come and sort of collaborate, um, and, 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 or the potential for, um, the town to use, um, on a, an as needed basis or, even, uh, the potential for it to be, uh, rentable and a res- revenue stream. We also talked about the need for quiet space potentially for, um, some mental health counseling. So this would also be, an avenue for that, um, as well, that kind of having some flex space that's not necessarily dedicated for one function or another, but could, could, have a variety of functions. Um, in this sort of suite, we also are thinking about a conference room space, some storage and a common lounge. Um, so those are the, the, the largest aspects of the program that we've been focusing in on. I don't think we're done. I think we're still, we're still refining those. Um, and we'll continue to do so over the next month, um, as we continue to have conversations. These things always work in, in waves. You sort of build and build and build and you sort of, um, you're able to make it better and better and better along the way and more specific. One other programmatic function that we've talked a lot about, which I'm sure, um, everyone knows about, um, is a high need. Uh, it's parking. So we've been thinking a lot about this, um, especially given the location of the site. Um, currently the site has about 54 parking spaces on it. So we initially targeted to try to, um, replicate at a minimum that, that amount of parking spots. So the community center would not be taking away from spots. Um, we've started to think about a strategy, um, which could lift the community center up one story, to allow, um, an on-grade parking deck. Um, and what that would allow us to do is to have, a few more spaces. Maybe that could become a revenue stream for the community center, but it also gives the community center, um, great views. Um, it's elevated. It's above the street. You're not looking into the street. Um, so you're really looking across, um, and into the landscape, which we think is also, um, a, a valuable asset. Um, one of the things we want to, to talk to our C, CM partners at Big D about is, uh, whether or not we want to go down a little bit or go up, because we understand as you elevate a building, um, you start to, um, have to worry about access, um, ADA accessibility, trying to get folks up, to the level of, of the community center. So those are all issues that we're starting to understand a little bit better. Um, but these are some of the thoughts that we've had. As Don mentioned, we've also been working with, uh, the Contour Group, um, Stephen Clark's group, um, who's our avalanche consultant. Um, I am by no means an expert, but, um, wh- what they've been doing and what they've been sharing with us is really, um, both fascinating and eye-opening. They've been working very collaboratively with us. We've had several work sessions, um, with them and our, um, design team and our engineers to talk about what are the different ways that we could deal with this, um, avalanche path. Um, they've also been doing on their own, uh, a set of analyses, um, which they're just starting to do, which is really mapping out the, the primary, um, avalanche flows and the frequency to give us the design loads that we need, um, to design the building in the future. So that's, that's making really great progress and they've been really fantastic to work with. I wanted to wrap up by showing you a little bit about where we, we want to go or where we're thinking about going. And we're sort of, as we get out of the programming phase and we're starting to understand all the parameters, that a, a community center on that site would need. Um, we want to, to think further past that, and try to, um, give you a range of what is expected and what is the potential. So, we do this oftentimes. So we do this oftentimes by looking at what we call a benchmark, which is a kind of standard case building. What is the, the way that you would see traditionally a building designed to resist avalanche forces on this site? What does that mean? That might mean a building that has big, thick concrete walls to resist the forces that, that the avalanche would impose. So is there a way that we can think about the avalanche differently? Could we build the building into the hillside? Could we allow the avalanche forces to flow over the top of the building? Could we break the building apart and allow the avalanche to throw between the building? Could we lift the building up and allow it to flow underneath? And what benefits could the community center have by taking one of these different approaches? Or is there a benefit? So what we're, what we're trying to do is design structural systems for each of these potential solutions and looking at, can we save carbon, reduce carbon by reducing how much we're building? So is there a less concrete intensive solution that might yield a better performing, more cost-efficient solution over time? So those are the issues that we're, that we're grappling with. And what we hope to do is present you with a series of options and variations for conversation that deal with those particular issues. On the same spectrum, I talked about sustainability. We want to understand what a baseline case is, what is, what do we need to do to get this building permitted from a energy code perspective? And then what does it mean to go beyond that? And can we, can we, can we define what it means to do better than the code? And then can we define what it means to go to even a net zero energy or a net zero carbon building and beyond? So some of the things that we're trying to do in this feasibility study is unpack what each of those mean for you so that at the end of the study, you have a menu from which to choose from and a range of potential costs, depending on where the project goes in the future. So we're excited to work through those issues more and share those with everyone. Our next steps, we haven't mapped them out exactly, but we're trying to work through the, the rest of the feasibility study by October, the beginning of October. So we have a couple more meetings with our advisory committee. We're hoping to at some point schedule a, a dialogue with the community where we can share some of these ideas about design, structure, and get some thoughts and feedback and opinion. And then, as I mentioned, we'll, we're, we're also starting to roll in and talk to our, our construction manager partners so that every step of the way, what we're proposing and what we're looking at is, is realistic and plausible and affordable. So that's, that's where we are. We, we've been having a really great time of it. It's been very exciting for us. I hope those of you who have participated in the conversations, it's, it's been exciting and rewarding too. We're really optimistic to see where this goes. So I want to thank everyone for, for having us tonight and offered to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jared. Let me, let me see if there's a couple of short questions that we can ask you while you're here, but we do still have a few items on our agenda too.
I just forwarded a couple, a couple of quick questions. I'm not sure if you're able to see them through the comments.
Can I just comment to the council that the comments in general is only private between the panelists, which are you? So the attendees, which we have none tonight, but they can never, they can't see those just as a guide to you guys if you're trying to communicate with the public.
Would you prefer we read them?
Yeah, if you're trying to communicate with everyone, it's best if you speak, not make a comment via the chat. Yes.
I'm happy to read the question out loud and let my colleagues address it. So Sheridan Davis said, "Indy Ed folks, would you share with us the participant numbers that are year-round residents of Alta?" Thank you. Do we, do we have that information, Elodie? Can we distinguish?
I don't have that right in front of me, but I know it's about a third of the people we've spoken to, so about 30-ish people, I would guess. But we can dig into it and get back to you.
And again, from Sheridan Davis, and as a follow-up, the year-round residents on your advisory committee, as well as the date ranges of gathering this information, just this summer, question mark? So, so I guess the question is, which of the advisory committee members are year-round residents? I'm not sure we know that, but.
John, why don't, why don't you list the advisory committee members?
So the advisory committee members, Mike Mon is one of them, Tom Pollard, Nikki Lamir, Sarah and Jerry Wile, Sarah Gibbs, sorry, and Jerry Wile. And if, I think you all know them, maybe Jerry is somebody you might not know as well as everybody else. He's a, he lives in Blackjack, he's retired psychologist from, I think, New York. And as soon as he retired, this is where he came. He came here whenever he wasn't working, but when he stopped working, this is where he moved.
They, they had a place in Alta for decades, I think.
And the other part of the question was, I guess, when did we start collecting information? Elodie, do you remember roughly when we launched the, the website and started?
I believe it was, what, what did you say, Jared? July?
July, yeah, it was the middle of July, so I, July 15th.
Yeah, so that's, so that's been the most open and public forum, but there have been kind of ongoing engagements using video channels like this with various groups and individuals, also ongoing, I guess, through the summer.
Yeah, we had asked the advisory committee to give us a list of folks that they thought would be interested in participating. And they, they curated a, a list for us that we reached out to. We reached out to over 120 people and those folks who responded were the ones who, who participated.
Okay, and you, that was the two questions, at, at least the ones that I could see in the, in the chat window. So if there are others that, you know, any other questions or comments that anyone wants to make?
Well, I would like to say just the one thing, it's like it was important for you to do this with the council. And now, you know, I want the council to be able to engage anytime, not just at this meeting. This meeting, you know, as we got, we kind of got derailed yesterday with the planning commission because of our hurricane force winds, but it's like you're far enough along now that people can say, hey, we love this, we hate this, do this, do that, add this, take that away. But, so this is just a, it's like, here we are, here's where we are. So council members, please weigh in.
I just had a question on the website. Is that, do we have a link to that website on the town of Alta? Or, I mean, just so if I, I have some other residents that want to go to that website, is there a place I could direct them?
It's on the website. And, and what I meant to say was, please weigh in, not just now, but I mean, now you know who they are, where they are and how to get ahold of them, so.
At least it's on the community center website page on the town of Alta's thing at the very bottom. You'll see the link to the.
I'll let some people know and, and I just wanted to thank you guys for your presentation. I think everything is really exciting and it makes me excited to go, go to an ACE event or yoga or some of the, some of the kids that attend school here, maybe they'll eventually end up there. And I think it'd be a really, really great spot. So thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you, Don and Jared and Elodie. It's been a pleasure.
You're all very, very welcome. This has been enjoyable so far and hopefully the, the best is still to come. And it's really thanks to the, the attention that we've been paid by many, you know, members of the community who are, who's, whose love for the place really comes through. So that's a great, great body of energy for us to try to channel and reflect back to you in, in the design.
Yeah, and I, I, I want to thank John Goldner, who's been really instrumental in our engagement with you. And he's, he's, from what I've seen, he's been doing a great job. And I get feedback from Indy Ed about what a great job John is doing too. So I want to appreciate that. And also thank you guys, all, all, everybody involved for the amazing way of pivoting, given the, the new technology and the way to do this. You, you know, it's been, it's been pretty effective, I think. Thank you for a terrific presentation, not only the level of work that you've put into it, but I think equally the level of listening to the community and how that's been incorporated into the work that you've done. You know, right now I could have about a million questions, but I know that you all have already thought about of those and another million and how they get incorporated into the process as, as we move ahead. So we'll get there. Thank you.
Okay. I just had one comment, which was something I'm sure you've already considered. And that's that this is all happening kind of during the summer and the fall is a shoulder season when a number of people are not here or even in a pandemic when they're not here. And so I appreciate the fact that it looks like maybe the schedule is pushed back a little bit because I thought originally you were to be done this month and it looks like you're pushing it back a little bit. And I think that may help get more participation from people who may not be yet tuned into it and be able to get an opportunity to communicate about it. So I'm hoping that maybe this presentation could also be available. I, I realize it'll be a bit flat without you speaking to it, but as a way to direct people to look at what the current, or at least what as of September 9th was part of what you were considering.
A suggestion to, to consider, it appears that this meeting is being recorded, this looks like that on my screen. I, I don't know whether it's made public, but if you want to take Jared's presentation and clip it out and post it, or maybe we could figure out a way to do that and put it on.
We could put it on the website as well.
Website, and that way people could, could hear some of the explanation because I think the, just the graphics alone might be a little hard to interpret.
Right. It's just as, as you know, since you sat here for much of this meeting, people may be interested in this, but not all the other stuff that came before it. And so to help them be able to get to the meat of what they're looking at, having it separately, so that they could look at that and maybe a timestamp on this meeting, Piper or Jen, as to where this would occur so people could go directly to that to.
I'll just clip it, what they suggested of. I'll share it with them.
We're certainly eager to hear as many voices as we possibly can to help us think about how to resolve the design.
Good. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care.
I, I think that one, one other thing, just before you go, Jared, is that we've got a little bit of snow and so people might start to be in Alta who aren't here now that they heard that we got some snow.
All right, good.
Thanks.
Great. Have a good night.
Okay, good. I know that was a, a little bit longer than you might have anticipated, but I, I thought it was important to insert that in at this point for the reasons John said and, and elicit the town, the communities elected officials to be engaged directly if they want to. All right. So let me move on to the part of my report that is me. We continue to operate our office with a single staff member at a time and no walk-in visitors under the COVID procedures that we developed. And likewise, I continue to attend Salt Lake County mayor's briefings on Fridays every week. Since we met, there was a UFA, UFSA board meeting on the 18th of August. And Jay didn't mention this, I don't think, but there's a strategic planning initiative that's going on there. So they're asking for the board members to talk about strengths and, and challenges. There is a code of ethics for board members that's being developed and it's actually pretty interesting. We are kind of pledging to do the right thing and given the history of the UFA, it seems like a good idea. And they were talking about some emergency communications. It looks like, and Mike, you can give me the most up-to-date information on this, Mike Maury. It looks like we are converging on an emergency manage, a communication system in Salt Lake County now. Is there anything you want to say about that?
Excuse me, you know, the agencies that, you know, that are all combined to make up the governing board at Vac Valley Emergency Communications Center, you know, have all been working very hard to get all the Salt Lake Valley agencies on a common CAD system, which is computer-aided dispatch. That's progressing well. You know, I, I think that the net result is, you know, that we're going to see a lot more efficient call-taking and streamlined dispatching of police and fire.
Good. Thanks. On the 20th of August, there was a COG Council of Governments meeting where they talked about track board membership, which is how the money from the tourism taxes gets spent. It actually is something that somebody from Alta, me, wouldn't be a bad additional place to be. But this has been a pretty tough year to be mayor and department chair simultaneously. And I just couldn't add another set of meetings onto my agenda. We talked about the census, which we've just heard about, and some responses to homelessness, which right now we've got in this country, one in eight, I understand, families are short of food and homelessness is becoming a bigger problem than it has been, especially now with the expiration of the. I can't remember the word that people have been using, but the amnesty from having to be, from being evicted is over. So that's, that's going to be a big deal in the county. Also, on the 20th, Alta Ski Lifts had a community information sharing meeting that was, I think, a number of you attended along with me. On the 26th of August, I met with the ski area and Forest Service and UDOT to talk about. It wasn't just me, I think Mike Maury was on that call and Chris also. Chris Colley to talk about the perfecting the easement through town, UDOT wants to do that. We talked about what could make sense. I'm happy to follow up with anybody who wants to talk about that and, and Mike and, and Chris could also fill in. The CWC board meeting that was normally occurs in early, the first Monday of the month was delayed until the 14th because of Labor Day last week. Coming up on this 15th at 7:30 is the UFA, UFSA board meeting. I've been invited to attend the UFSA board meeting, even though we're not quite. We are now, our, we've been approved for membership, we met all the deadlines. And so the annexation has been completed. We aren't actually on the, I'm not actually an official member of the UFSA board until January because we struck a deal with them to keep us at our current status for the rest of this year. So the tax doesn't go up until next year. On the 15th at 10 o'clock, we're having an initial road meeting, which is a little bit early, but I'll get into the reasons for that in just a second. And that's going to be a Zoom meeting. Town council meeting is on the 14th next month, four o'clock. Here are the temporary dog licenses issued between. Here are the temporary dog licenses issued between eight, 12 and nine, four. Luke Dennis, 10 days. He's in Sugarplum. Marcia Decker in Peruvian Acres for 21 days. Dave Valenti, eight days in Albion Basin. Sarah Goodson, a month in Albion Basin. Tally Goodson, a month in Albion Basin. Cam Hoffman, eight days at the DPH. I want to bring up an issue that I'm, that concerns me as the, I've been thinking about this pretty hard for a month. I've had a number of conversations with various entities, including the ski area and Mike Mon in particular. And I want to commend Mike for some of the, and thank him for some of the rather detailed thinking he's been doing about operations this winter. And I appreciate that his perspective is a critical one on the issue. I want to share my perspective on some of the issues that I'm concerned about. Kind of put myself out there in public on some of these concerns. So first, there's going to be, I think, quite a bit more automobile traffic in the canyon this coming winter. And I can think of five reasons for that or five factors that will increase this. Backcountry skiing has, for some years, been the fastest growing aspect of skiing. So there's a, just a trend line of that going up, but besides that. Oh, you can't hear me, Cliff?
It's fine for me, but.
Okay. Yeah. I, I, I didn't think.
Fine for me too.
I can hear you, but if you could turn up your mic just a little bit, might, maybe it's, maybe my speakers are maxed out.
I don't know. Let me see. Hang on just a second. Let me see what I can do here.
Not a big deal if it's.
I, I can, I can increase the input level. It looks like to me. Stand by. Okay. I've just increased it.
Beautiful.
Any difference, Cliff?
That's perfect. Thanks.
Okay, good. Okay. So I think there's going to be more traffic. One is more backcountry skiers, just because that's the trend. But in addition, there are going to be a bump, I think, in backcountry interest because you don't have to sit on a lift with other people if you're hiking up. So some of the demand is going to get shifted. So that's one reason. I think there are going to be more cars from the valley because I suspect that a number of people who might otherwise have stayed in Alta will prefer to stay in a rental unit in the valley that is self-contained rather than being in a lodge. I think that there are going to be more arrivals to the lodging in Alta by car because I suspect that there's going to be a shift in demand out of airplanes and into cars. So if you're coming from San Francisco or Los Angeles, my guess is you'll just drive your car and want to park if you are staying at one of the lodges. There's going to be less bus service. They'll, they, they have a fixed number of buses and they are going to load them with lower capacity than in the past. They do not have the ability to add more buses onto the route because the buses that come up the canyon are specialized buses with different gearing, different tires, different equipment and are shorter. So they can't just simply backfill the, the, the demand for the buses. And finally, this is not exactly clear to me yet, but I think the Alta Resort Shuttle is going to be problematic. It's certainly, if it is running at all, it will have lower capacity. And so people who are staying in the view, for example, or Sugarplum are going to have an incentive to want to drive over to the ski area in a way that they have not. So those, those reasons I think are going to create more traffic issues. Part of the reason why we're meeting early, the road meeting. We're going to have to figure out a way to manage the cars that have come up to beat the closure in the morning and for dawn patrol because there, those people who traditionally would have gone inside, let's say the gold miner's daughter to get a cup of coffee and wait out the avalanche control are not going to be able to do that. The gold miner's daughter has already indicated to us that they are not going to invite people to crowd their, their space. So we're going to have to figure that out. There are a couple of options that we've been talking about. That's going to be part of the conversation next week, the road meeting. I have some concerns about the ski area operations. I've looked at the National Ski Area Association document that Mike shared with me, which I appreciated. He also shared with me another document that I don't remember what the acronym stood for, but it was basically a destination attractions or full-day attractions. Places like Lagoon would be included, I think, in that. There is no doubt that skiing is better than indoor activities compared to. I expect to ski this winter. I don't expect to go to a concert, you know, at a Bravinal Hall, for example. Face coverings are often used in skiing as a default anyway. Above, there seems to be, I, I, I understand that there's some controversy around a particular study, but I can tell you that at the Waterford School, for example, which is inviting stu, having students come to class, you may not wear a, a single layer face covering and qualify as having your face covered. And at the U, I don't think we would allow people to come into class with a single thin layer like the buff. So I'm not sure that a buff passes muster. I have concerns about issues and these are in increasing order, I think, of difficulty to manage. I think that I, from what I can tell, it is a industry standard to allow skiers to group up and identify themselves as a party of four and ride a quad chairlift. I think that that's going to lead to some really interesting dynamics in our lift lines. I think it's going to lead to some altercations at the top of the lift because the ski area has told me that they're going to allow people to self-select and be riding singly. And I can just imagine what happens on a powder day when somebody takes three extra spaces away from people who are waiting in a relatively long lift line, maybe longer than usual because capacity is lower. And there's going to be some yelling, which is not a great thing in COVID and probably some flipping off in response. And then these folks are going to confront each other at the top of the lift is my fear. I have recommended to Mike and to Dave Fields, both of them have not been enthusiastic about this idea, that rather than allowing parties of four on a chairlift and/or parties of one, just have on a quad, people on the outer edges, parties of two, and just leave it at that. You don't have to manage it as much. Food and beverage is going to be a challenge, as Mike said. His capacity is going to be lower. We are in an environment where people will need to go inside to warm up. I know that the idea is that people will use their cars for shelter and I think more, a higher percentage of people will have cars. Not everybody who skis in Alta has a car to go to. And so I'm not sure what's going to happen to those people. Restrooms are problematic, not just because the surfaces get contaminated by people, but more importantly, because COVID is in the, the people's stool. And when you flush toilets, it gets aerosolized. Some people are going to know this and they will, at a higher rate, my guess is relieve themselves out in the woods. And so I think we have a watershed issue tied in with this, but there's also a health issue and where are people going to use restrooms and how is that going to not spread COVID? I mean, behind a lot of my thinking here is Alta's reputation will be sorely challenged, to say the least, if we are, if we experience a super-spreading event. Now, the two other, the two other items that I think are problematic, when lightning strikes, the lifts get evacuated. And when there are mid-canyon closures, people can't go anywhere. And while they can keep skiing, some people are going to be tired and going to want to stop skiing and maybe miss, they'll, they'll misestimate their own endurance and then they'll want to quit. And if they don't have cars, I don't know where they're going to go. And if they do have cars, they're going to go sit in their cars and turn the cars on and they're going to idle for a long time, which has air quality implications that are, are pretty, pretty much not the priority, I think, this winter. But they're going to run out of fuel and so we're going to have an issue with people running out of fuel. And I'm not, and I know that we manage that nowadays in, in the past by pulling them out of line. And Mike makes his fuel depot available, which has been very gracious, but I don't know how many additional people that can handle or how we're going to get them to that depot. Dave Field suggested, I think it was Dave Field suggested to me that we have tanker trucks and the combination of gas tanker trucks and avalanche risk doesn't seem like a great idea. And then finally, here's my big scary problem. It doesn't happen very often, but if we had to have a midday interlodge and we had three or 4,000 skiers, we have a huge issue. And I'm really disquieted by that. So I wanted to get those ideas out there. Happy to talk to people about it. I, I don't really mean to engage in a, in a back and forth right now, but I just wanted you to know what my thinking is and I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Mayor, for setting that out. I think it's critical that we all think in the level of detail that you have and I look forward to communicating further on.
Thanks. I can tell you that my tagline about all of this is I am not, nor am I going to become the mayor in Jaws. And I went and watched the movie again. His name, the character's name is Larry Vaughn. And I am not going to be in that position. Okay, we've got a couple more items on the agenda. I, I'm not sure that we're ready to, it seems to me still a little bit premature to try to pass the ordinance on the land use, given some of the conversation today. Does that, does that strike you all as something to postpone?
I don't see how we have a thoughtful and productive talk about it in, you know, in the time that we have today. Let me just say a couple of things and I'll try to talk less and then turn it over to John and my, and my colleagues on the council. We started on this process in January of 2015. Had a couple mayors and several other council members since that time. We've had four very able attorneys helping us with it. I think we should, should all remember Clarence Kemp, who's no longer with us, who laid terrific groundwork. Lots and lots of work by the Alta Planet Commission and most important of all, lots of citizen input that's been taken to heart and really has largely shaped the process of zoning ordinance revisions. Having been at this since January of 2015, I could tell you only from my limited perspective, one person, from my perspective, every single change that's on this proposed document represents a compromise and that's, that's how you get things done. So nothing is going to be perfect for any of us. There is no finish line. If we can get this done, then we're going to go right back to work the next month and look at what further needs to be done. And I'll listen to all of my colleagues and, and work with you all. And I'm sure there's more work to be done, but I believe we've worked through the issues in the scope of this project. I would suggest that we have another work session next month and that, that we, we, we give, put this issue at the top of the agenda. We give it enough time, both in the work session and on the town council agenda and it represents a compromise on every single change for all of us. When we do this next month, I'm going to invite my colleagues on the town council to come with me and, and make this unanimous and then turn around and go right back to work the next month and, and, and work on everything that remains that's, that's short of perfection.
Spoken like, like it was the 20th century still in terms of politics. Very nicely said. Okay, so I would, I would like to postpone this for, until the next meeting and schedule a work session prior to the next meeting. Does that, is that acceptable to the town council members? Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. The, the, the next.
Mayor, what time would that work session be? Three o'clock?
Yeah, let's do, let's make it before the next.
Okay.
Meeting. I, I guess I should look, we should look at our calendars, but I'm pretty sure that I've always, I've been keeping that time. So it'll be October 14th. I don't know, do, if we, we probably needed a formal motion and, and, and vote, but why don't we say Cliff made a motion, I seconded it and we had a unanimous, what did it look like to postpone? That's what it looked like to me anyway. Okay. All right. Discussion impossible action on resolution 2020, it's 2020 R20, a resolution authorizing execution of Salt Lake County ILA regarding a CDBG program. This is a bizarre, this is, this is kind of housekeeping and we don't really have much of a choice unless we're going to really get sideways with Salt Lake County because they want this, they, they need this done by September 18th and they want it done. And it requires unanimity is my understanding from all of the municipalities in the, in the valley. So we don't even have the opportunity to negotiate the language on this.
Mayor, can I just jump in?
Yeah, I was about to ask you, Polly, to go ahead and review this.
Well, I just also, we've had Karen Cooper.
That's right.
On, on the, on the line for quite a while, who is available to answer any questions. So I'm, I'm also, if you want me to answer anything, I'm happy to, but I wanted to let you know that the Salt Lake County representative of this is here.
Right. I'm, I'm sorry, Karen. I, I neglected to connect your presence with this issue. If you'd like to give us a quick overview of what's going on.
No, no, thank you, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to be available really to answer any questions that might come up. And I'll, I'll go ahead and say hi. So you're talking to a real person. Basically what happened is this is an urban county renewal. HUD has every year, we receive an allocation of Community Development Block Grant Funds. And HUD makes that allocation. There are certain stipulations in order to be eligible to receive those HUD funds. And for the past about 40 years, the Community Development Block Grant has been made available to communities. For about the past 27 years, the, the jurisdictions that are in the Salt Lake Urban County have been able to cut the umbrella of what is called the urban county. That is basically creating an entitlement. It creates an entity that can receive funds from HUD for the community block grant. block grant. And there are certain requirements that you need to have as a jurisdiction in order to be eligible for those funds. You either need to be an entitlement jurisdiction, which involves having 50,000 or more individuals in your jurisdiction. Or if you are, if you are made up of smaller jurisdictions, smaller cities and towns that would like to apply for these funds, there are some other criteria, including you need to hit, hit a threshold of about 200,000 people. So under the Salt Lake Urban County, we currently have 17 jurisdictions that aren't large enough to be their own entitlement, but that can come together to create basically an entity that can receive and be eligible for those funds. That entity gets renewed every three years. It does require an interlocal agreement between the jurisdictions. Full disclosure, I have been in with the county for about six years and I've been in this position about nine months. So although I'm familiar with overall community development, the, the intricacies of of these agreements are new to me and I'm learning as I go. So I will tell you that in June, we submitted, we had gone out to all the different jurisdictions. We had everybody sign off on that preliminary. Basically, if you didn't say that you wanted out, then you opted in. We submitted that to HUD within the timeline in June. And on July 15th, HUD notified a couple of the jurisdictions, that being Mill Creek City and Harriman, that they now qualify, if they would like, they can become an entitlement jurisdiction because they now exceed 50,000 people. Along with that, HUD took a really hard look at the interlocal that we submitted. Again, this is basically the same document or language that has been submitted to HUD for quite a few years. But HUD has with some changeover of staff there and some new things that are on the table right now, they took a really close look and said, you've got some language that isn't, we're not going to certify you until we have the language changed. At the same time, we are currently under three interlocal agreements. And the reason for that is over the past 27 years, jurisdictions have dropped off and new jurisdictions have come on. And so it made sense to, instead of trying to change language in three different interlocals that have, have come about over the years, that we combine those into one, that's a streamline that everybody can read through it's all in one place. As, as we did that, so that you know what those five areas were that needed changes. Basically, it was the emergency solutions grant, which is one of the pots of funding that comes under the county or HUD awards to the county. We didn't have the language consistent in all three agreements. We also had multiple references to the home program and it just wasn't consistent over the three. So the bottom line was, we were notified by HUD on August 19th that we needed to present them with a document that they would certify us as an urban county. And if we don't make the deadline, they've given us until the 18th of September. If we do not make that deadline, then the urban county does not qualify. And on October 1st, when HUD makes its allocation, we won't be one of them. So what we have sent out is a revised interlocal. We've taken the three prior, we've combined them into one. We've made the changes that they requested, which was language on the ESG and home programs. And we also clarified some things in there about joining or, or leaving the urban county as a designation. So if, if you choose to opt out, which you can, what would happen is you would drop out of that interlocal agreement, which is a three year, which means for the next three years, you wouldn't be able to come back on. But you would be out of that for the next three years. We did need to get some clarification. And I was requested by Molly as well as Polly, you would ask me as well. And I'm sorry, Margaret, you had asked me to look into a little bit, what happens if you choose not to, to be part of the urban county? HUD will say that you can then apply under the state or the balance of states. So basically, instead of coming through the urban county, if you have a project that you would like to have done or that you would like to participate in, having some influence on how those funds are awarded. You could go into the balance of state. I did make contact with Keith Heaton today, who is over the state program. And he explained to me that although HUD does allow that to happen, the state of Utah does not. The state of Utah says that if, if you're not participating and you would otherwise be into the urban county, that they will not allow jurisdictions to come in and apply. So basically it would just be dropping out and not participating as, as a member of the urban county, if that is what you choose to do. That will come up for renewal again. This would be 2021 through 2023. And Mayor Sandak, I know that you have participated in the past or have a sense of what happens in those urban county meetings, which typically follow the COG meetings. And I, I know that I don't want to go on and on about things that you may not want to hear about. But if there's any questions specific to the process or understanding, I'd be happy to answer those for anybody that's, that's not quite sure what happens with those funds or what the process looks like.
So let me just ask one question and point out one, one. So, so another aspect of this new interlocal is that the list of municipalities is correct now.
Yes.
And current, which is, which is important, right? It was part of what happens. Moved into municipal government situations. I presume that the, if we opted out of this, it just, the only implication is, is that we could not apply for funds that we would be able to apply for if we opt in. And so I don't see any reason for us not to participate in this. Especially if there are some, I don't know, for example, if the right of way gets perfected through the town, there may be, you know, some curb and gutter and, and, and parking and, and bicycle lanes and things like that. Those are the type, some of those issues have come up when I've attended those meetings. But I don't have in my head a list of what the eligible expenses are, but there, there's no reason, it seems to me for us not to say, yes, thank you. We want to participate. Polly, is there any language in this ILA that concerns you?
No, and I checked with Town Marshal Maury about making sure that we abide by the requirements. There are some requirements related to police activity and we do. So based on that, I have no concerns.
Okay, council members.
Thank you for the presentation. HUD traditionally covers expenses like affordable housing. Is that right Karen? As I read sort of HUD's purview? And I wonder what likelihood there is for Alta to ever gain any part of the HUD funding that comes through this ILA.
So primarily, the focus of the county is definitely housing and housing stability. However, as, as members, as participating jurisdictions, the community development block grant, historically, that has been about making sure that local jurisdictions have additional funding to, to address infrastructure issues or ADA issues as well as public facilities. And so that is definitely what the eligible uses under community development block grant. I will say, and I think Polly, you had asked me or somebody had asked me originally. And I didn't know off the top of my head. Again, I don't have the history off the top of my head, unfortunately. But I did go back to find out, when was the last time that the town of Alta received any kind of benefit as far as applying? And it looks like in 2012, 2013 and 2014. There were some projects at that time, the process was a little bit different. So the awards were about $2,500 that were going to you. So it looks like there was a central building, central housing rehab that was in 2012. There were some accessibility improvements and town park improvements awarded in 2013. And then in 2014, there were some, it took unspent money from prior years and it combined it into a new contract that also dealt with some additional ADA accessibility issues. So it's been since 2014 that there's been a contract in place. One of the things that we did find out historically was that these really small amounts of $2,500 or $500, they weren't significant enough to really make projects come together. And CDBG dollars, you have to have projects comes together or it goes back to HUD. So one of the benefits in about, I think that probably was about 2015, that Mayor McAdams pulled all the jurisdictions together and instead said, if we have that as, as a single pot of funding that the jurisdictions will need to apply for. But what it does is allows you to kind of bank up and say, if you know, Alps doesn't get something for four or five years, that then it, it comes up as your turn. So in that ranking, somehow we need to account for that. So instead of a $2,500 project, it may be a $30,000 project or, or 40,000, whatever. One thing that I did mention to both Margaret and Polly is that we have in observing how the awards have come down the last couple of years, since the nonprofits have been competing basically with the jurisdictions. The nonprofit grant writers are very good at pulling heartstrings, which they should. But what happens is when you are competing for an ADA accessibility ramp with maybe the road home, trying to make sure that they have emergency shelter. It's making it very hard for the jurisdictions to get their infrastructure projects to come up to the top of that list. So we've talked about earlier this year, we have not worked out how this might work. We're going to come back to the jurisdictions and say, help us figure out a better way to do this. But it may involve maybe carving out a piece for the nonprofits to apply for and then still make sure that there are dollars in the pot for the jurisdictions that don't have to compete the same way, or at least on the same type of criteria and scoring, because it is, it is very difficult when you have a citizen review committee to make the, the ADA ramps stack up against those really crisis needs that we're seeing in the public services or, so anyway. So Councilwoman, to, to your question, yes, it definitely can be used for things other than housing. And that is an eligible use and we're looking to find out how we can make sure that some of these projects that truly do come up the the priority list for our jurisdictions, that those can be funded as well, because that is the intention of the CDBG funds, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Piper, you, you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, Karen, I have a question. I seem to remember that there was a some kind of percentage or a rate of low income people in your town compared to how many people you have in your town to, for the town to qualify. Is that correct?
So there's different ways to have an eligible activity. You need to meet a national objective. One of those would be a limited, a low mod area. And in that case, you would need a census tractor. You would need to carve out an area that truly was serving individuals that 51% or more were low to moderate income, so up to 80% of AMI. Another way to meet one of the national objective is a low to moderate income clientele. And so that can be done if you have a public facility that is serving 51% or more clientele that have some kind of an eligibility screening that shows that they, the, the majority of the clientele served by that public facility or served by that infrastructure improvement are, are low to moderate income. There is an urgent need and a blight also, national objective that's rarely met, just because of the requirements. But there are also some ADA accessibility that kind of trumps everything. So if you have some ADA accessibility projects, that is something that is going to be a presumed LMI and you'll be able to qualify based on that need. So for example, the Guadalupe School in Salt Lake needed some fire escape improvements this year. They had a, something happened and the firemen responded and they couldn't get a pair of one of their para educators down the stairs because they didn't have the chairlift and they didn't have what they needed. And so that got trumped and they were able to qualify, not because of the income or the area, but because of the ADA accessibility in that decision. Did that answer your question, Piper?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I would, if anybody else have any questions for Karen? Okay, I would, I would solicit a, a motion to approve the resolution 2020 R20 for this interlocal cooperation agreement. By Sheridan and seconded by Elise. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, none opposed. Okay, thank you Karen.
Thank you so much. I will drop off.
Thank you Karen.
Let the county know where we're in.
All right, perfect. And I will follow up with Piper or whoever I need to, to get copies of what I, the signed document. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is new business. Eight twenty one PM, I mean eighteen twenty one PM.
I had a couple things that, just a procedural one. I noticed that at, at every meeting now with the COVID situation and our not, lack of anchor location, you're having to read that document, which is fine. That's, that's a requirement. But the question that I have is, could we as a council, and maybe it's a Polly question, could we as a council adopt something that has a longer time period so that Piper and you are not having to monthly prepare this document and do it, but simply you read it at each meeting as a way of satisfying that and that we put a longer time period on it.
Well, Margaret, that would make too much sense. So the, the governor or the state legislature in their wisdom put this requirement in the state statute that the determination can only last 30 days. So that's why we have to redo it every 30 days. So
Okay.
Your, your suggestion. Especially when it comes to COVID, you know.
What we could do, Margaret, is schedule more town council meetings. And then we wouldn't have to do it at every town council meeting.
Perfect.
What's even more crazy is that the, it's the chair of each meeting that has to do it. So Harris, the mayor's determination letter technically doesn't apply to the planning commission. The planning commission, I guess the planning commission could adopt, the chair of the planning commission could adopt Harris, the mayor's determination, but each, each one does their own. So yeah, it's frustrating.
From every CWC meeting too, Margaret.
Okay.
I'm sure you've, I'm sure you've thought of this, but I guess if the following town council meeting is only 28 or 29 days later, then you get a two for one.
Maybe we can make the determination a little shorter, so Harris has a little less to read, but.
So the other question is, does anybody know about what this big dig is that's kind of behind me in this picture? You can see on the one side is the Bay City Tunnel. And this is on the road and it looks like kind of a roadway and dirt road and maybe a carving out of this culvert. Does anybody know what that is or what it's about?
I mean, go Mike or you?
Go John.
Dang, you're armed, so I have to comply. Well, Colangelo and Highmark up in West Grizzly were disturbed after the big mudslide a couple of years ago. And they wanted us to do something to help them. And it's like, none of that property is ours. So we sent them to the Forest Service. This was the Forest Service approved plan to improve their winter access. They're doing also some work on the road up to Twin Lakes Pass and, and Michigan City. But this is a Forest Service approval of improving access to those properties up in West Grizzly. It's
BO SP.
Bigger than I thought it would ever be, but.
I presume we're not paying for it.
Nope.
I have a little bit more information on that. So the, the Forest Service treat, I guess they have a permit that they got to have winter access with, you know, with a snowcat or snowmobile from the parking lot area up to their properties, as well as that being a hiking trail. Due to the loss out, due to the erosion that had occurred due to last summer, they could, they had approached the Forest Service and said, you know, the bottom of that is just too steep. We can't get up there to where we wanted to go to get to our cats. So they approached the Forest Service with a plan to repair the road and breach the that new gully that had been dug in there. The Forest Service did approve that down to the gully. And they were just supposed to kind of breach the gully and, and be able to get their cats to, or snow, snow machines to that point. and be able to get their cats to, or snow, snow machines to that point. They then approached the Forest Service and said, well, we have all this material we need to haul up to fill in the erosion that occurred on our, our path up higher. And so that big pile of dirt is the dirt that came out of the house that's being built down here.
Oh, wow.
Down there on Martha Road. And that's going to be, my understanding is, is they're trying to cut a path to be able to now take that dirt up and, you know, use it on up the path, up the road to fill in what's been eroded out. And in the end, they're, they're not supposed to end up with a road that you can drive up there. It should still just be a winter access, kind of a green road with a trail in it in the summer. That, that's what's been approved by the Forest Service. And I think they're pushing their limits just a little bit.
Thank you. Yeah, kind of shocking when I saw, I almost turned this off before we started the meeting, when I saw those pictures behind you, Margaret, but the thing about the, bringing the material from the house by blackjack, the Forest Service loved that. Because it's all native, they're not bringing anything in from downtown, but it is kind of pushing the limits of winter access trail.
Well, let's make sure they don't build themselves an, an all season road and be paying attention to that. Because that's not what they're permitted to do, right?
Correct.
All right.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Sorry, I realize I'm not part of the council, but you know, every year at this time, I'm compelled to say something and you know, that something is Friday marks the 19th anniversary of the September 11th attacks on the World Trade Center and the loss of 2,977 Americans. And please, please take a moment and think about that as, as I know we all will. Thanks.
Maybe, maybe more people than that, like we heard about today from Jay. All right, well. Anybody have anything else they want to bring up? Okay, how about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a nice rest of the night. Talk soon.
Hi, Polly.
Hi. Hey, thanks for your help with Alicia. She said you were really helpful.
I told her to join on and see how it went.
She said she might, but they were trying to get their packet out. I don't know if she, well, you said there were no, no one was watching, right?
Oh, no, there was tons of people watching on YouTube.
Other word. Okay, cool.
Yeah, actually I should stop the recording. Yeah, no, we had, at one point we had six people watching on YouTube. Plus, I mean, that's a lot. I know that's not a, you know.
Can people comment on YouTube or no?
Oh, well, actually I did see.
You're still, you're still recording, by the way.
No, it's paused. We are live though. I'll stop the broadcast.